Good, good. Spoke to them several times.
We call a meeting to order at 7:15. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media, and we are on some. Mr. Gilberto?
My turn. Pleasure. Sorry.
If everybody could stand up on the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So at first. The bond anticipation though, to speak of.
That's right. That's recommended, Chair, through you. This is our routine action at this time of year to continue the financing associated with short or long term borrowing. In this case, it's all short term borrowing that we are out of getting. The, uh, a chunk of the borrowing is in there, over $4 million is associated with the middle high school project, the short term borrowing. We are in a closeout process with the MSBA and were informed in December, I believe it was, that if we could expect it to be about a year long process, we were not expecting to be done at this point in time. But it is my open expectation that this will, this project will close out between now and the next time we're having this conversation in May of 2024. So we're forgetting. And you have a memorandum in there with regard to the procurement. The bids go to lowest bidder. In this case, I think there was a nuance in terms of the rate versus the, what ended up, who actually was the lowest overall cost. I don't know if the treasurer wants to elaborate on that. Sometimes I ask them a question over the years rate.
Right. So we had four bids. The bannings were 6,000, 5,89, 577, and Piper and Sandler and Company was the lowest bidder at 3.5711 was our NIC, so the net income cost, interest cost, excuse me. So they got the lowest bid and we did get a premium with this borrowing as well. And then it was, Fidelity was at 3.7814, BMY Mellon Capital Markets was 3.7969, and Offenheimer Company was 3.8364. So the lowest bidder is to Piper. Would you like me to go through what we're actually banning for, the list that we're banning with the items?
Would you like to hear?
I looked through it, but I'm okay. No, I'm fine.
Does anybody need, tell me for her to go through that?
I'm fine. I saw it already.
I think we all looked at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the first page, the first two pages only need to be signed by the board, and then all of the tabs is where the rest of the board need to sign.
Okay.
But we might need a vote.
Madam Chair, through you, for the first time, we have an abbreviated motion.
Yes, we did, we did get an abbreviated motion.
So I believe it's in the package.
Okay.
You're welcome, Mr. Wagner.
I'm used to long ones. Madam Chair, I move to approve the votes of the board as prepared by Bond Counsel to the town and presented this meeting, which votes, among other things, formally award the notes to the low bidder determined at a competitive sale held on May 18, 2023, and establish the terms thereof. The formal terms of the votes prepared by Bond Counsel to the town and approved by this motion shall be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Wagner and a second from Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Sudo?
Aye.
Mrs. Mary Kelly?
Aye.
And my second is aye.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make some sense, I cannot let people feedback. People just pick up the mic and apologize, so that will be bad news.
Thank you.
I have to thank you, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Joe.
We're having a little feedback here, so.
Yeah. We can press our mics. Good.
Hot lights.
Yeah.
Now I can turn down a little bit. I'm riding, I'm trying to keep up with the sound. If people aren't talking close to the mics, I'm riding the mics as hard as they can, that's not good.
Okay.
You're gonna get feedback, I'm still trying to keep the overhead PA system running as well, sometimes you can't hear in the crowd, so. Bell snap.
We appreciate it, thank you. Our next item is a one day wine and malt beverage license from St. Teresa's.
Madam Chair, through you, we did receive an application for St. Teresa's Block Party, I believe is the title of the event, to be held in June. You should see both a complete application and comments from departments. There were no issues with regard to this. I don't know if we want to invite the applicant to offer some comments at the event?
I'd love to invite him. If he can come up to the microphone.
Madam Chair, before we proceed, just a couple of disclosures here. I happen to be a member of St. Teresa's parish, and the person who's going to be making the presentation happens to be my beautiful niece Nicole Habial. I believe that there is no inherent conflict, but I just wanted to put the record to show, but letting everybody know. You don't have my vote yet, I have to hear what you have to say.
Why do you disclose that I'm a member of the parish?
We are.
Well, I would also say that I am a member of the parish.
So am I.
So am I.
Okay, we all.
Rule of necessity.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you could go ahead and tell us about the event.
So this is our second block party. We did this back in 2019, obviously the pandemic, we were planning other ones and that kind of kibosh thing. So we had a very successful, well-run block party, 2019 came before you then, not reinventing the wheel, we're just doing the same thing. We have tip certified people, we will have a police detail present. Serving hours will be 5 to 8:30 with the food, where the food service will be. So nothing too crazy, just offering it. We will be selling the alcohol, so that's why I'm here before you, it's about a 300 person event, so.
Would you like to let everybody know when, the date, the time?
Sure, it's June 23rd from 5 to 9. It will be serving from 5 until 8:30.
And that, is that open to the public?
It is, but tickets have to be purchased and it's a 300 person max. We cannot take.
So once the tickets are gone, that's.
That is it. We have fire code, lay assumption, sure. Be here, so, again, so, like I said, the police detail will be present for the whole.
Do my colleagues have any questions on that?
Just comment, looking at all the feedback from the various boards committees, commissions and departments, doesn't seem to be any objection.
Mr. Wagner?
All good.
I attended the last one and it was fabulous. And anybody serving the alcohol will be tip certified.
Right there, much of certified.
So you'll be the only one?
Yep, she's the only one.
300 people?
I know, you have to remember, the crowd is a kind, it's kind of like family oriented type crowd, so kid friendly.
I work really fast. Mr. Sudo?
Let me know if you need a wine consult.
I know.
Mrs. Mary Kelly? Yeah, it's probably good you're the only one, because that slows down the sales and.
And there's somebody separate, like dealing with money, she is 100% devoted to serving.
Patience is a virtue and all of that stuff, so.
All right, so we'd like to vote, we have a motion.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move to grant a one day wine and malt beverage license to St. Teresa's church for an event to be held at 63 Winter Street on Friday, June 23rd, 2023, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. So we have a motion by Mr. Wagner and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Sudo?
Aye.
Mrs. Mary Kelly?
Aye.
And I am aye.
Did a traffic sound, John?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I hope you have a great event.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to.
You don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah.
We're having a meeting. One to the next. Thank you.
Uh, update on Chestnut Street, Ipswich River culvert.
Oh, this one's fine.
Mr. Gilberto?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, we have a presentation here. You see, we have Director of Public Works, Joe Parisi, who is here, along with Town Engineer, Dan O'Donnell in the back row there, Sam Gergorio, close enough, or was I actually right?
That's actually right. Very good.
From TEC, our consulting engineers, along with Chief Michael Murphy and Lieutenant and Executive Officer Mark Zimmerman in the back row there. All of them, along with the Fire Chief who's not here, have been part of the conversations with regard to this topic, so there's quite a lot of effort that's gone into this item going back about two or two and a half weeks. And unfortunately, it relates to the condition of a culvert on Chestnut Street on the far northwestern end, as you're approaching Park Street, and some steps that we are going to need to take to deal with the condition of the project. And yes, it is the same culvert that's referred to in the warrant, where we are requesting funding for a design to reconstruct the culvert, replace it with a bridge, but the timeline has become more urgent in recent weeks. With that, I will turn it over to the Director of Public Works, Joe Parisi.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so it's happened quite suddenly, and we've been sort of putting together sort of a timeline of what has happened and where we're going as far as meeting, a timeline that Mastioti is requiring, you know, the town to report back on. So let me just sort of get to the next slide. This is just a location slide, a locust map of the area. I think we are all pretty much familiar with this location, which is at the intersection of Park and Chestnut. And there is a, as you see, the Ipswich River flowing under Chestnut, that is where there's a twin culverts that are in pretty bad shape. So the timeline of events, on the westbound lay, there was a sinkhole that developed to the roadway, June 24th, 2022. We made, we had a contract with TEC to really take a look at this bridge in preparation for a design that we wanted to do for replacement. We knew it was failing, we had Mastioti inspection reports that gave us a condition assessment that was pretty poor, perhaps one notch down, you know, met road closure. But this was a plan of attack to sort of gather the data in advance of, you know, the actual design effort, which we are funding in FY '24. But you can see, you know, we did somewhat less delineation, did an existing condition survey, and base mapping. We already have taken some borings and we're looking to see, you know, what the requirements are, what the soils look like for supporting abutments for the foundation of the bridge, stream segment samplings, hydrology, hydraulic analysis, and we were looking at a couple of different options for bridging, you know, over the river. So as that's all happening, the eastbound sinkhole developed in the roadway of August 1st to 2022. The capital request did go in in October 2022 and is recommended, recommended for approval in the June 2023 budget, that's 300,000 for design. Again, eastbound sinkhole redevelops, so the same sinkhole that developed, it refilled and repatched, now develops again, that was April 16, 2023. And again, westbound, more recently, May 8, 2023. That's sort of what really got us moving as far as, you know, having a real serious look at what's going on, you know, the sinkholes developing twice in the same locations. We had inspection by TEC. We all concluded pretty much we needed to notify Mastioti of the developing situation, so we, we had done that, and Mastioti came in and did another follow-up inspection, and they had a conference with me and concluded basically that, you know, the bridge needed to be closed, you know, it's unsafe. You know, what's happening is, is, you know, gravel or structural fill that, you know, contains the culvert or keeps that all structurally sound, sort of eroding away or being washed away, and you'll see the moment, from, from around the culvert, and sinkholes are sort of developing on the roadway, voids anywhere along the surface of the roadway above the culverts, could be there, cars could certainly puncture through those, but let me, all right, so just, just to continue on this, so we do have, did we see the letter, formal letter from Mastioti asking or recommending, let's say, that we close the roadway? They wanted a response back to them, and so we are, you know, working on that, that response, but we will have that to them fairly quickly. We've been doing some implementation meetings, you know, trying to plan for what this looks like, road detours, things like that. We do think that there is certainly going to be a lot of traffic at the intersection of Central and Park, and so we're looking at some temporary traffic lights there to help ease the situation. Let me move on from here. So yeah, Mastioti closure letter, they're looking.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes.
I just realized we need to share the screen, folks, I'm not able to see it on Zoom.
Oh, I got you. So the closure letter from Mastioti, basically Mastioti inspects and rates locally owned bridges to assist cities and towns, basically applying to the state for all legislation. But in this particular case, you know, the information they had, or they reviewed, but the Chestnut Street Bridge, again, was re-inspected after our contact with them on May 11th, 2023, and they recommended that the bridge be closed to vehicular traffic due to two things, basically the discovery of the roadway sinkholes that were still evident there, although they were patched by DPW, and also the seriously deteriorated corrugated metal pipe that the two culverts are made up of. So you'll see at the water line in some pictures that follows, it's pretty bad as far as, you know, the rotten missing materials and, and the fill material that escapes by that. So we're looking to respond to Mastioti by Friday, May 26th. Will be a drop, letter being put together for that, and we'll get that to them. So the, like I said, they do periodic inspections, we have some reports here, February 17th, 2016, the culvert pipe condition was rated a five. It was, again, another report in 2022, culvert pipe condition was rated a three. Basically, their reinspection on May 11th still rates it at a three, but the condition of sinkholes developing and obviously there's concern of continued voids and potential for, you know, some, some failure of the culverts that we just want to avoid, obviously. So I'll get into some of the pitches, you can see here what I'm talking about, the loss of material, that this is all sort of rusted through, you can see rock and soil in that line there. That is at the end of the culvert, we have one of the upstream and downstream end. Another similar picture, location, where you have similar rock at the water line. And again, more so continuing to be similar situation, not as severe. So here you see the gravel and fill material sort of being lost from around the outside of the culvert and eroding into the culvert and being washed away basically by the stream. We've had some high flowing, you know, stream levels been higher, and flowing water's been a little bit more so than usual during the drier summer months, so I think we're washing a lot more gravel than maybe during the drier summer months, but you can see the pockets of gravel that's just developed, and there's some more lost material. So that's what, what the sinkhole looked like, just that basically there was loss of material of gravel below the asphalt, and, you know, when a car tire or whatever traveled over it, punched through it, and so there was one on both sides of the roadways near the end, not anything so far in the middle of the roadway or the, more so the travel lanes, more to the ends where it seems to be more loss of material on the culvert, more loss of gravel probably around that. So as I said, we did have a capital request in for 300,000 in design. We estimate that, you know, construction costs will be 3.5, and that will be, I guess, better estimated or defined once the design is more complete, so design and permitting, I should say, for the 300,000. So that, that is up for vote on FY '24 budget. So here's a preliminary signage detour plan, we're looking at putting signs and barriers in certain locations to deal with traffic. Traffic basically is going to be coming from the south.
Joe, just back up.
Yep.
You said, we're looking for the 3.5 million dollars in the current?
That's not in the current.
No.
Budget. The 300,000 is, it will be looking for, final estimate, I guess, after design is complete, and put that in at the appropriate timeframe for funding.
Okay, so.
It isn't, it isn't being requested as of time, just the 300,000.
Sorry.
All right. So the, so any traffic coming north will travel, get to the point of Chestnut and Central, and then be detoured up Central into the intersection at Park, and then most likely, you know, going left and continue on, obviously there could be traffic already going either across the road or to the right as well. And again, coming eastbound, you would have to bypass this cut through, which most people would take to get to Hamel, and we'll go around and come back down that way. So there's, there'd be different signs at different locations, barriers would be at the, at the bridge location, Jersey barriers to stop traffic coming through, but you can travel, local access to the lobby yard and to all the residential properties along here in the, the field as well. So we see five points have been packed, so Chestnut Street to Central Street, that'll be open to local traffic only, as I said, road closed after the DPW entrance with some barriers. Central Street at Park Street, increase in traffic is expected there. Park Street at Chestnut Street, Chestnut Street will be closed. Park Street to Central Street, increased traffic again, and Park Street to Hamel, increased traffic. So the cost estimate for temporary civilization, we're really talking about rough numbers at the moment, but there is the, the cost of the installation and the removal of it at some point in time, we're not sure exactly how long that's going to be to complete project. I, I think at this point, you know, we can fund a certain portion of what, miles to rental of the, of the temporary signals, whether it be a year or two years, but we have to, you know, have enough money to at least get into a contract, because we, we are out to bid, we're advertising the project as we speak, and we're requiring bids to be submitted June 8th. So at that point in time, you know, we hope to have a number that would be below the 150,000 dollar, you know, estimate, that's what I'm targeting to get funding for. You know, the lights will go in, police traffic, police traffic details will have to be there for that installation, you know, we'll rent them from the contractor for a period of time, they'll maintain the temporary lights, we'll pay the electricity cost, and the contractor will come and remove the signal lights and then restore the area afterwards. So that's all I have.
Mr. Walter?
Just on the bridge that's in Central Street, the rating on that is okay because there's a significant amount of heavy traffic, the heavy vehicles that cut through Chestnut, not just morning and level, everything from the gravel pits that, which are not so much busy today, because gravel pit's pretty much gone, but cement trucks and things like that that are going to be traversing eastbound on 62 and then south or over the PVD area, they generally cut up Central Street. The bridge designed Central Street by Ipswich River Park, is that rated enough to handle cement trucks and things of that nature? You know, and have you considered, the chief too, of maybe a no right turn on Central Street and send people down to Hamel Street to take a right, for the ones who would normally cut through Chestnut Street to get to Hamel Street?
So I, I think on your first question about the, the rating of the bridge, I'm not aware that that has a particular rating or limit, weight limit to it, but we'll certainly look back to see if there's any concern about. So, as you say, so typically, you know, unless it's, you know, has a limitation, you know, it'll be able to carry on, the weights of cement trucks and things like that.
As far as the, we're not going to be detoring down Central Street, we just assume that people will take the Central Street, we're going to try to guide them to Park and Hamel Street. So we are going to be in touch with the companies, the eventos, and we'll talk them through what their best options are. Can't send them through the rating, which we tried before because that backfired on us, and we're going to try, Park and Hamel Street is a tough intersection in the morning anyways, so we're going to try to do what we can to just guide them in a different direction. Hopefully, they, if they are going through the PVD, they can take 93 to 128, because they're probably not going to want some traffic here as well. But I mean, normally, there's very little, people, people who are driving eastbound on Route 62 rarely turn right on Central Street, because they will have already taken Chestnut Street. Right. So you're talking about a significant amount of increase in traffic over that Central Street Bridge, and in that small stretch of Central Street in front of Ipswich River Park and those few homes in that area, that's why I was asking if you maybe have no right turn in eastbound on 62 on Central Street, and send them down to that intersection at Hamel Park. That way there, you're going to minimize the impact on, in front of Ipswich River Park, or at least have, for everybody to cut it through, the laws that cuts through there, and then they'll have the signalization at Hamel Park to do it. But again, as far as the eventos, your suggestion of, you know, head down 93, 128 is probably a better suggestion, because if you, if you don't have that right here turn, it makes even more sense for that to be that, and that will minimize the impact on the community as far as those trucks cutting through the smaller neighborhood and through on the ways. Don't forget, Madam Chair.
I was thinking the same thing, actually. I don't know if it's possible that you can just have resident and park traffic on Central and try to get everybody else to go to Hamel?
I mean, it sounds good, concept. Problem is, a lot of people use DPW, a lot of people using the parks, to have a no right turn off of Park Street, I don't know if that would, it may help the trucks, but I'm not sure it's going to help the residents, because they're going to have to drive all the way around to get these things bought.
No, I was thinking allowing the residents and the people, you know, I mean, I know.
It's just not enforceable, I guess.
It's not enforceable, but you would think people, if they see that, you know, I've seen those signs before, you know, residents only, park, you know, I mean, you try to do the right thing. I think you could cut back maybe on more people using it.
So our plan is to use the electronic sign, was to discourage people from using those roadways unless you live there or have. So our plan is to use the electronic sign, was to discourage people from using those roadways unless you live there or have business there. We've been putting one on Haverhill Street entering North Reading and one on Park Street prior to Chestnut Street. And we're trying to get a third one for coming east, westbound on Park Street as well.
Okay, and that's what it would say?
We're, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to discourage them. So we're not detoring them down any street. And that's where we're hoping that people are going to find that this is problematic for them and then they're going to find alternative routes. Because it's just so much volume. We, we, you know, we were looking at some traffic counts today. There's a lot of people that use Chestnut Street to cut through and it's, you know, in the thousands a day. So it's, you're pushing all of that traffic to that intersection. And if we push them even further down into Park and Haverhill, we're probably one of our most busiest intersections that rush out of traffic. Can get a long day.
Go. I can wait.
I had a bunch of questions, but I, I think I want to go back to this because I, I think I may have misunderstood what you said about where you're detoring. So you're not actually detoring people off of the road with the culvert? I think I must have misunderstood this.
So there's local traffic at this point here that could come up to, you know, any of the properties along the road here to DPW?
So it's very hard, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's, what, what, what road are you on right now?
I'm sorry, this is Chestnut.
So that's Chestnut Street that you don't want
Correct.
to be used, right?
We, we don't want traffic over the culvert, which is at this location right here. So there'll be a barrier on either side of the, of the culvert. You could, I don't know that there's any reason actually to come down this side of it. There's no homes.
There's one, isn't there?
There's one home on this side.
But it, but it's before the breach. If you're coming down Central Street. If you're going westerly on Chestnut Street, it's just before the breach, just before the bridge, that's the last home.
Like here?
Right. No, the other way.
The other way?
Right.
So if you go from here.
It's right there.
If you go from Park and take a right onto Central, it's right there. The breach is right there. Um, excuse me, Chestnut.
So that will be, there's going to be a hard close at Park and Chestnut. There will be barriers there and nobody will be able to access it.
That's where the, your detour.
It'll be a hard close. That's a detour.
No trucks should be going?
Nothing. No cars, no trucks, no pedestrians, no bicycles.
So in order for trucks, let's say, to get to Moynihan, they're going to come up and around and go, basically do like a triangle to get there?
Correct.
Okay. Is there on the other side there, does that culvert run to the, to the easterly direction as well? Is there any kind of degradation of it on the other side or is it only on the Chestnut Street side?
It just cuts across Chestnut. It's directly into Chestnut.
Okay. And I, I did have a few more questions if it's all right with you, Madam Chair. I, have you, first of all, why do we need to respond at Mass DOT? Are they actually giving us money out of cycle to be able to do this project?
No.
So why, why are they imposing upon us a requirement to respond unless they're going to be actually participating in helping us fix this issue?
Well, they, they made a recommendation. They want us to follow up on communicating with them on response.
We should be saying, we need some money. You have money for these types of projects. What kind of money can you give us to, to fix the culvert? That's what we should be saying. And then my other question, that's my opinion. My other question is in terms of the, the restoration or the kind of temporary measures that have been put in place right now from those pictures, it looks like that, that degradation has been going on for a while, but people are still using the road. So what types of emergency measures right now have been taken to shore up that road?
We, we have plates on the roadway over the sinkhole areas to protect any further impact from that.
I don't know the science behind it, but it kind of looks like the chunks of the road are falling down. So what is to stop those plates from going down too, given the?
Well, based on the, the recent work that we, we've done, we haven't seen any other large voids on any of that, just those two spot areas. So it is something of urgency that we, we do need to act on. That's why we're doing this. I don't know that, you know, requires us to, to sort of do something before we're totally ready with all the other measures we needed to put in place. So we're, we're making plans and we're moving forward to have an organized shutdown of the roadway.
I'm just curious though, if there's anything that could be done temporarily to shore up the, the roadway so that it doesn't have to be shut down because it's going to have such a significant impact, I think, on.
We have that conversation with, with our engineers at TEC and, and with Mass DOT. And there doesn't appear to be anything that would be of significant value to, in a temporary measure to, to do that. I think it would be quite costly. And so I think moving forward with just the, the closure and other measures to just make sure detours can, you know, be relatively, you know, safe, that we would do that instead.
I just have a couple more quick questions, if that's okay, Madam Chair. Have you gone through the regulatory approval for work on the wetlands yet? Because it seems like this has been looked at for about a year now. So has there been anything done with conservation on this?
No, there's been some gathering of what the wetlands delineation is. We will be doing the permitting as part of the, the design request of three hundred thousand dollars, design and permitting.
And I also think that if, where this isn't even a plan created, it's a little bit premature to just close the road and maybe this will take place a year from now. I don't know when the actual construction is going to, going to take place. But if it's a three and not a one and it's still capable of being used provided that the larger, you know, heavier vehicles are detoured around that area, that doesn't lead to further degradation because they're going back and forth and they're told to go around and maybe we don't have to close it to local residents or, you know, local individuals, that local people that are going back and forth. Unless there's a timeline, you know, a, a quick timeline to have this project done and completed. That's just my thoughts on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I was going to ask about the steel plates as well because, any idea how long it's going to take to do this project from start to beginning?
As, as far as the, the replacement of the culvert in total, yeah, I would think that around a couple of years at least.
So on the steel plates, I've seen some seriously large, long, wide steel plates in Boston. And I'm wondering if that can't be something we can do temporarily at least until it's time to take it down and build the bridge. I'm just wondering if there is such a thing as a steel plate that would span that. It seems like you have enough. I, I know it's a double culvert now that I've seen that, so maybe hard to do. But I've seen some really big steel plates that are used routinely in Boston. I wonder if we can potentially do the same thing and keep that road open until the bridge, until we have to replace the park.
Right. Now, I, you know, I rely on the engineers to tell, inform us, you know, what measures can be taken. And I think structurally, it doesn't support, you know, really the load and we would have to, in fact, consider the bridge not being able to carry any load at all. It's just considered to be a failure. And I think that's, that's how they're treating it at the moment is, is just that. We've got to really prepare a replacement plan. Close it is the safest option and move forward with whatever detours and other measures you have to do to, to make that safe for a period of time until the bridge can be replaced.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
So it seems like our hand's going to get forced, right? Whether we like it or not, by the state, which is just, you know, one of the things that can happen when you want to kick things down the road and, you know, you get the, can't throw them back in your face. So if that is that, and I just have a question, Chief Murphy, you mentioned that it's sometimes hard to enforce, like saying trucks can't go this way. Because I do, you know, feel that, I don't know if that's like a, a moving violation where it can be, the penalties can be enough to deter. But I know that, you know, that street going in, if you're heading towards PVD, take a, I think it's Russell, it was a river. You know how there's no heavy trucking? Since I moved to North Reading, I swear I have never seen a heavy truck there. So some, whether or not it's being enforced, and there, truckers seem to be very aware that if you want to cut the one fourteen, you've got to find another way because, you know. So first that, I, I think that, I don't think that trucks should be allowed to route down Central at all. If it's an inconvenience, it is. It's the cost of doing business. I mean, if they, if they got to go around and do a bigger loop around Haverhill, not, not that anybody wants that, but so be it. Just because my bigger concern is heavy trucks mixed with a lot of little kids by Ipsut River, that's a problem. Because, and I'm not saying that like parents are letting their kids run in the middle of the street, but the percentage is very high of how many times that park, especially in the summer months. And maybe, maybe that can be a concession that in the winter, we could open it up to everybody because Ipsut River doesn't get used as much. But like right now, I mean, what from, I mean, on the weekend, it's all day, but on the weekdays, starting at like four in the afternoon, there's, there's hundreds of kids going in and out of there. So that alone. And, you know, we're really popular now, so we'll really be popular then, including me. I love that. So, but the bigger thing is that I think if we do that plan though, are we, are we asking for trouble by almost having a, don't block, you know, having, figure out a way not to block the intersection of people coming out of the high school? Because that's my thing. I don't see how there's not a backup that goes way past that. And now, I don't care how many times the lights changes. I mean, if you're coming out of the high school, you're just not, you're just not leaving. And then I don't know what other ways out. I mean, I just don't want people to start getting queued and trying to go through other areas that are closed off because there's no other way out. I mean, I don't know if there's, I've never driven it, but is there another exit out of the high school on the other side by the tennis courts? Okay, no. So.
There is not, there is, but it's not public.
Okay. So I, I, I think that there's really no good answers here if we have to do it. But if we do have to, it needs to be explained pretty clearly. And again, if we got to blame the state because they're forcing our hand and there's absolutely, I, I don't know if there's a way around it. But if there's no way around it, I mean, you know, if there's any way to keep it open until construction actually starts, because then you can justify it, right? If you start seeing people working on it, it is what it is. But if we shut it down based, you know, to Mr. Benny Pelley's point, and for six months, nine months, like nothing's going on and that's shut down, that is just, that's going to play awesome in the community.
You're talking two to three years.
Yeah.
You're not talking six, nine months.
But I'm saying, if, if there was actually construction vehicles working on it for two to three years, you at least can say, look, work is going on. But if nothing's going on and it's just, if we end up like the, the bridge right outside Kendall Square where for five years, nothing happened, let me tell you how popular with that was with the city council meetings where they're like, we swear we're working on it. No, you're not. There hasn't been anybody there for five years. So I just don't want that here because, you know, we don't have another seven bridges to cross like Boston does on Memorial Drive. So, yeah, I mean, if, I don't know if we've explored it. I mean, I've had very preliminary information, but if there's a way to keep it open until construction starts, I, I just think that will be an easier pill to swallow, if possible. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
I, I didn't mean to blame, I don't mean we blame a DOT.
No, we should.
I mean, and, and, I mean, it's our culvert. So this is something upon us that we should be paying attention to this infrastructure. And, and I don't, I'm not blaming you either because you are, you know, you are new to this and this culvert is not a new culvert. I'm just thinking, are there other ways to shore it up so that we can let the residents, so we can use it, so we can all use it until such time as there's an actual project going on. And, and Mass DOT can't force anything. They're, they have no regulator, they have no authority to force anything. And the fact of the matter is they're holding purse strings to be able to fund these public projects. So that's what we should be interacting with them on is how much money can you give us to do something right away? But is there something in an emergency, Mr. Studo, is really, what can be done? Patching or something put up there in an emergency basis to, I don't think that's not a worthwhile endeavor to figure that out and what the cost factor is. And I think we do have some funding that's available that is, you know, hopefully, we're going to consider, consider later using for it. I think this is the type of thing, that's a ma- major roadway and you're, you're giving us a plan to reroute against several intersections that we've discussed are dangerous that need, that already need other construction that are on our capital plan for other, you know, proposed roadway improvements because of their danger level. And then rerouting right, right down where the school is. So that's, my thought is, what can we do to shore it up now? I know you said patching and is that, is there something that can be done to, to make it, to render it safe, even if it's just on that one roadway, so that it can be used until this project moves forward? That was my thought.
Mr. O'Leary?
So my understanding is we're going to replace two culverts with a bridge, right? So the culverts are going away because they're rusting out. What about concrete sleeves with culvert, culvert, even on a temporary basis? But I know it's costly, but again, shutting down the road is also somewhat costly as far as convenience and as far as, two to three years is a long time. Who dictates that it needs to be a bridge as opposed to new culverts?
Well, I think that's pretty much a, a design choice. I think there's been a little bit of investigation already as to, you know, what possibilities are for, for bridging over it. I, I think, you know, getting into a culvert design is possible as well, but there may be some limitations or, or less life to that solution as well, so.
Why is that? What do you mean less life?
Well, I, I think, you know, a bridge is probably more of a longer term solution than, you know, culverts in the environment itself.
Depending upon the type of culvert. I mean, if we have concrete culvert as opposed to.
The metal culvert, sure.
Metal ones that rust, rust out and fail. And again, the depth there is not very, when you're talking about a bridge, I mean, right now, people can't traverse through that area anyway with a canoe or a kayak just because of the topography and the way that the culverts are designed. So there's no, as far as accessibility for recreating, that's not happening anyway. And I don't believe we're talking about a bridge that people are going to be able to pass under because you'd have to raise it up above the, the roadway level, which would then bring it right into the intersection. So, and I know you have another prelim, preliminary designs yet, but my guess is you're looking at a bridge structure at about the same height that's there now, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I would think that, you know, concrete culverts would be less costly than standards for bridges and whatever else is, goes into the design and structure of a bridge as opposed to culverts. So I would think the timeline to replace culverts with culverts would be shorter, the cost would be less. And you could use materials that aren't going to deteriorate as the current ones are. So time wise, it's not going to be impacting traffic either. Or even from, on a temporary basis, if, if the state, for whatever reason, determines that they don't want any more culverts in the river, you know, on the Ipsut River, Association doesn't want those types of things, you know, then so be it. But on a temporary basis, putting a sleeve in there and then filling around what's the culvert said is there now, as you're doing now, would prevent the erosion in the sinkholes from occurring. So why not culvert? So let's put it that way.
That's what I was just going to.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is there, there seems to be some. So I, I think what I'm hearing is that there seems to be some desire to look at, you know, some temporary measures at least to sort of keep the road open. I, I think maybe initially, until we have a solution, we still need to go forward with that. But if there's, you know, money that, whether through the state or other, you know, funding available to do some temporary measures, that, that effort would be sort of welcomed by the slipper.
I'm just curious, I'm not understanding why they would still say it's three and yet this is a big emergency and it's not safe. Why wouldn't they have lowered that three?
Well, I'm not sure how, you know, how much effort they, they really sort of put into changing the numbers. I know they inspected it and they wanted to sort of communicate with us that their inspection indicated, you know, that something should be done to close it for the period of time that it needs to be repaired or replaced. So, you know, whether they should have changed the rating on, you know, the most recent report or, but it's clear what their feelings are after the engineers inspected it.
And to follow up with Mrs. Manny Pelley's comment about funding, I mean, there's huge amounts of infrastructure money out there. Wouldn't this be considered, infrastructure? I mean, I would think that there would be money out there for this. Have we, have we investigated that?
We've had some conversation about it and it, the bridge is too big to qualify for funding under the state's Small Bridge Program, which I think we're all familiar with, through the Park Street Bridge. The alternative that the engineering firm referred us to is the Transportation Improvement Program, which is a state-run program with, as I think we've talked about in other forums, a multi-year waiting list for funding. They require that you complete the design and submit it to await funding. We'll definitely look at that.
Because we have the design next month.
We will have a design in, I think they said a year's time, based on the permitting required, maybe less than that, but we'll have something to work out of. I, I think the primary thing that I heard when we talked about a temporary measure is the permitting that would be required for it. I mean, engineers really stressed that in most scenarios, it would be up to a year worth of permitting for either a permanent or a temporary solution. And they were cautioning us against losing time on a permanent solution and spending so much time on a temporary solution. But, you know, I think we're hearing loud and clear that to try to, you know, pursue additional options for a temporary solution and we'll certainly do that with the engineers.
Oh, I got one more thing. Mrs. Manny Pelley?
I, I don't, I'm not following why that would take one, I just don't get it. We know what the problem is. We know where the problem is. We know that there's sinkholes. What is going to take a year? What, do, do we, do we need to make a picture and do what Mr. O'Leary suggested? Put a cement right here? I mean, I, what is the, why would it take a year for something temporary? I don't understand that.
I have to defer to the engineers.
Who, who are we asking permission of ourselves to fix an emergency situation? What are we, why would that take a year?
I have to defer to the engineers, not the permit expert, provided.
We, we can try to get some additional detail on that schedule, but that, that was what was said at a meeting that we had regarding, you know, temporary measures and even permanent measures as well. The permitting is quite lengthy. And, and I don't think it's locally the issue. I think it's more, you know, at a state level.
So, I mean, we all are aware that this is going to be a traffic nightmare. This is going to be a horrible situation that if we can try to avoid it as much as we can, we should do everything we can to avoid it. I think Mr. O'Leary brings up a great point with the cement culverts, you know, that sounds like a, a good fix, temporary, and then, you know, we go from there. In the meantime, maybe we'll have lights off to permanent, maybe, that's another discussion. That would help the situation.
That's true. Would that smaller, that smaller idea, instead of building a bridge, qualify for the tip project?
Right.
Would that be a smaller construction project that might be eligible in an off-cycle for funding or anything like that?
We'd have to talk with the program. My guess is probably not, but we could certainly pursue that.
Good question. All right, so, any others, Mr. Studo?
Quickly, I, I want to give a little shout out to Mr. Kelleher, who has brought up about this culvert now for, I think, every single CIPC meeting I've been in. And that's what I meant about how we, we had to put some things to next year, or we thought we could, because funding. But this is just a prime example of something that can come back and, you know, just force your hand that sometimes now we have to deal with. But I just wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Kelleher has mentioned it over and over and...
I've heard you too.
And, and yeah, I wish I'd listened more.
I was only mentioning it because it was told to me by a DPDW director a few days. I wasn't, I am not an engineer at all. So this wasn't my finding, it was just reporting that it was out there and we needed to deal with it some of the later in the 300,000. We were asking for issues to get the design and permitting done.
So we were on topic.
That we were going to have a big project coming down the road, probably in a year, maybe two years, so I guess what, it's two weeks.
Right. So we probably should move on.
I just have a quick question in relation to, we've been talking about a bridge. Who's dictating a bridge as opposed to culvert?
Yeah.
So right now, that's the design recommendation from TEC, our consulting engineer.
All right. You two?
I'm the traffic guy.
I'm the traffic guy. Good for you. Lucky for you, you're the traffic guy.
It doesn't work for us.
Yes, we've already come close to completing the design for the Park Street Bridge. Is this project, mostly because you don't want to close down two bridges, going to postpone the Park Street Bridge? Because the Park Street Bridge is, as we know, not in a good place. And if you don't know flood enough, we may be in the same situation we are now. At the moment, we have the design for the Park Street Bridge, we have state reimbursement for part of that.
Right.
And we have the money in the capital plan to go forward with the Park Street Bridge, some of which is also reimbursed by the state. So we need to really think because, you know, this is, this is potentially, if I want to do really Debbie Downer, not great.
No?
Ms. Parisi, could you get a clarification on that number, three, for us? And it just seems to me, if it was such an emergency, they wouldn't leave it at three. That's what, that's confusing.
Careful what we ask for.
Yeah. I mean, we should know, so, we should know. If it is a real emergency, then, then it is an emergency. But if it isn't, that changes things.
I'll communicate with MassDOT to see what their rating is, if it's still three or some other number.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, I saw with my own eyes, it looks like the bridge is in pretty bad shape. I mean, those culverts are, you know, it's coming in, they didn't see it, you know, recently, and now it's like, you know, probably during the spring and everything else like that, all the water flow caused it to get worse than it is. So, I mean, we're clearly, whether it's three, one, whatever it is, it's, it's failed. It's clearly failed. And so, I think probably what we need to think about is getting those, the technical people in to, to, to share with us some of the options that, you know, if you pick a concrete culvert, what is the impact of that? How long does it take? How long does it last? If you pick a bridge, what does that look like? Give us, you know, give us a few options to look at. I think we just have to get focused on how we're going to fix this in the long run. I don't think there's any, because of the double culverts, I'm looking at the dimensions, you really couldn't do steel plate across it, so you're really stuck just locking it down. Safety has to be first, and it really looks like it's failed. So, let's just move on and let's get some, let's get some options in that we can look at for the various bridges. And let's just focus on that and get that done as quickly as we can.
Absolutely, but I still would want to hear that because we do have the Park Street situation too. And is that just as bad? Is that...
I think we should hear about both, because I don't know much about the Park Street one, so I'd like to know about that as well.
Because I would want to put that off if it's, if we've already got state funding coming for that, we, we don't want to lose that.
Yep. We need another bridge. We need more, because I don't know anything about the Park Street one either. I know you've been mentioning about these two ones, I don't know anything about them. Now I know about one of them.
Well, the Park Street Bridge is mostly resurfacing. We don't have to rebuild the bridge, you know, substructure yet, to save.
Yeah. Because, I mean, you know, like, if you take the highways, I mean, you talk about bridge design, if you, you know, like at the highways, when they build the flyways, whatever they do over the 93, they get those done in a few weekends because they've already pre-built them and they drop them in, you know. So, I mean, that's not going to save us the lead time, but it certainly could save, you know, could potentially, they could be working on the bridge now and getting ready to drop them. And that's not so huge, you couldn't do it by cranes. So, again, I, I'm not a technical guy, but, you know, it appears that we need some options. And we should know more about how that fits in with the Park Street one as well. We don't have enough information.
So, yeah, so if you'd like, I mean, would you do a follow-up, you know, presentation on options?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense.
At a regular meeting or maybe a workshop meeting?
Whatever. Workshops. I mean, not going to decide, but, you know, whatever makes sense.
Yeah, I think workshops, we could be more focused if that's something that fits into the schedule.
Okay.
Just what, what is the state's role at this point in relation to forcing us to close the road? Obviously, public safety is, is number one. You know, if the road isn't safe, the road isn't safe. If we can make it safe on a temporary basis, all the better, which is what we've been doing. And when they've come in and they've assessed it and said, nice job of what you're doing, but not good enough, you need to shut the road down, right? That's what they're saying? Yes?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. Do they have the authority to do that, first of all? And secondly, you know, can we continue to shore it up as we've been doing on a temporary basis until we find out if there are other alternatives that we're, that we're looking for?
And also, Mrs. Manny Pelley's point, can we just keep the trucks off of it for now? Is that an option? To buy us some time to, you know, only allow the cars to pass over and reroute the trucks?
Yeah, keep in mind, we have our own DPW garage right there, we have Moynihan Lumber right there, which are two neighborhood users on a regular basis. But again, that's not the bulk of the traffic that we have here. The DPW and Moynihan Lumber, as far as their own vehicles, contributes a very small, very small number. It's all the other traffic and all the other trucks that are cutting through here that have a significant impact on the safety of the road. So, so again, you know, safety-wise, can we continue to shore it up on a temporary basis, you know, so that we can come up with a long-term viable solution that we all understand and buy into without having our back against the wall right now?
Right.
Saying, okay, we got to commit to basically, you know, 300,000 we've already committed to, but even that, I'm sort of questioning the 300,000 we're committing to is a bridge, you know, when we haven't looked at, that's the recommendation from the engineers, not the traffic fellow there. We have, you know, are there other alternatives that can be utilized?
All right.
We should be presented with that.
Yes.
Got it.
Got it?
Got it.
Thank you.
So, state won't be happy with our response, apparently, from a timing standpoint?
We'll have to draft something up and, and see what that really looks like. I, I hear all the concerns and I, I think it's a, it's a response with questions, perhaps some guidance from the legal council, but I'd like to be able to put something together and submit other part of the process.
I, I think in that letter, you should make it clear what a traffic nightmare will be created by that.
When you're talking about two to three year closure.
Yes. But this isn't just some road that, you know, isn't an important part of...
Mr. Studo's point, it's not a six-month deal where, you know, the construction's starting, you can see it, it's going to be done shortly. This is a two to three year timeline.
Mr. Kelleher?
Just a, a question. What scale is the three and the five hundred? Is three of them, five, five is the best or is it, is it a 10 points?
Higher is better.
I understand five is better, but I'm trying to judge what five means. Is it five or 10?
Nine or 10, yes.
So it's a scale, so it was about halfway before, now it's about 30%?
Correct.
Is that, is that what it would be?
Yes, over 10, correct.
That's significant.
Yeah.
I mean, more significant than it was on a scale of five.
Yeah. I was... Thank you for that because I was assuming a five. So, shouldn't assume. So, the scale is from a, is it 10 scale?
It may be 10. I thought I spotted nine, so I'm totally sure.
Still bad.
It says it's, it's already at a bad point.
Yeah, right, right.
In, in relation to the Park Street project?
Yeah.
Is there any administrative recommendation to continue to move forward with that or to push the pause button? At the moment, no change in distracting with that. We, we need to figure out what, more, more answers to the questions that we've discussed here and questions that are coming into this. But, you know, at the moment, right now, that project has been under design and is awaiting an appropriation for construction funding. It's on the warrant for, I think partially for funding.
What was that rated? What did that get for a rating?
I don't have that report in front of me.
Could we find that out?
Because people use that every day.
But we did some shoring up of that. There was some work we did to keep it open. We did some shoring up a few, a few years ago in order to buy us some time to get to the point where we're at. But that's the question, is that what was the rating?
Yeah. I think we should know the rating on that. All right, I'm going to take one more question, this is what I'm about to do, and then I think we should move on.
I just want to make an observation that when you first talking about the Chestnut Street culvert a year ago, the cost was approximately 3 million, it is now 3 and 1/2 million. If we push this out with a lot of temporary fixes and you know that if you go over the, if you go on the street, it's a lot less enticing to get down to it and, and, and make a permanent fix. You could be able to substantiate more money if we push it out. Just saying. We found this out on a lot of projects.
Yeah.
Not necessarily because of, of anything that we've done wrong, all right? But we have found out in a lot of cases that when you postpone a project, whether there's crazy inflation or not, it's going to go up in cost to some degree.
So I don't, I don't think that, I, I think the biggest question here is, would they be satisfied with cement culverts instead of the bridge?
Yeah, are there other alternatives?
Do I understand that?
Yeah, there are other alternatives.
Are there other alternatives that could maybe be faster, you know, and less taxing to the community? That, you know, would shorten the amount of time and that, that it would have to be shut down? Is there other alternatives we can look at besides that big, huge, long project?
Is it functional, does it work?
Yeah.
And it doesn't meet some of these expectations or, it's not ideal. But sometimes you don't need ideal. You need something to function and work well.
Yeah, I mean, how old was that culvert?
It was, I believe, set, six years was the installation date.
And that's metal.
Wasn't around.
So if it was cement, it probably wouldn't be an issue.
There may be some issue with how to construct it though, because we're not, that's where the engineers come in handy.
All right, so I think we should wrap it up. I think you have started everything you need to hear.
I have, many notes.
Okay. Thank you. And we should move on. We're going on to the discussion of Park and Central Street intersection.
Madam Chair, through you, this is a follow-up to a discussion two meetings ago where there was a presentation made by the Capitol and the Planning Committee of a project for the reconstruction of the Park Street at Central Street intersection. There was a decision on the board's part to split that project into two funding requests. One was $250,000 for improvements at the intersection, including pedestrian...
One was $250,000 for improvements at the intersection, including pedestrian crossing. And then a separate line for $350,000 for a full traffic control, a yellow or green stoplight, four-way situation. There was some discussion, these questions about what the, what the recommendations were at the meeting in December of 2021 and what they were now. We were fortunate that we were able to get squeezed in for an updated traffic account by T, traffic account by TEC two weeks ago. And so there was a report that we received that I distributed to the board today with the results of that. And we're hoping to sort of pick right up with that information since it's the most current information at this point in time and can take the conversation from there. You know, I'll stress, as I said in the last meeting, for permanent improvements at this intersection, that's a multiple month design and public gearing process. And my hope is that we don't try to compress all of that into a discussion this evening. But I understand that there are strong feelings with regard to the possibility of the traffic signal being there. My intention as a member of the Capitol Improvement Planning Committee was to provide all of the options for timely design and construction of whatever improvements were decided upon. Clearly, we may be a bit derailed on the news you've heard this evening with regard to the culvert, Park Street Bridge, et cetera. But through you, Madam Chair, I will turn it over to Sam Gueborio from TEC, who I believe has a presentation here. He is our traffic engineer, not a structural engineer, although it's the same firm. It's helping us structurally to go over the traffic counts. And Sam, can we just make sure we get that shared through the?
I was just waiting for you to finish talking. You don't have to. I was going to turn off your. So good evening, everybody. My name is Sam Gueborio. I'm the Senior Traffic Engineer at TEC. We are, as I told on this particular project as well. So I think many of you may have last seen me at the week 28, run through a few months back. And I know back in December 2021, Liz Holtman was sitting in my seat right now, talking about these particular four locations that we had looked at throughout the community. Liz now has moved on. She's now the Transportation Engineer for the City Hall. So although I'm sitting in her place right now for this, I was the traffic engineer behind most of the information, numbers that Liz was presenting that particular day. So I guess one of the key parts is one of the intersections that we looked at was Park and Central. And we provided, along with the other intersections that we were looking at that day, recommendations for improvement for each location.
By the way, it never looks like that.
Oh, I know. This is, it's the clearest picture of the intersection that we had on the time. So if you remember this, this was one of the slides that Liz had presented. And it went over the recommendations that we had had directly into the study, whether it's shifting out the curb line on the northbound approach of South Street in order to pass the alignment, obviously some new signage. One of the items here and ideas is the opposite question is we had talked about monitoring for a future traffic signal. And that really was described further in the report that we had had, which is through this paragraph. I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but basically what it said is for that study, basically the time that the study was done, we were dealing with volumes that were done during COVID. And in that study, we have about 42.8% adjustment factor to the volumes to get it back to a normal level. That's a lot of traffic. So whereas some locations, the volume was at such a level that certain warrants would be always stopped, signaled, or whatever we were looking at. The factor may not have really delved into something that we would have a kind of a, what we were calling at the time, a marginal or a marginal impact for what we would have for warrants. We provided a recommendation as part of that study that said that we wanted to monitor this one in the future because although it was warranted for a traffic signal after the COVID factor was adjusted applied to all COVID volumes, it wasn't something that we could provide a direct recommendation for because we can't prove that post-COVID, the volume would be back to normal. We were a year past the beginning of COVID at that point and we were still 50% off basically of traffic volumes. With our, really an end in sight at that time of how long this was really going to go. Where we are sitting right now, we can generally say based on most of the locations in Massachusetts, we are pretty much back to that 95% to 105% level where the traffic was before. Minus Boston, Boston's still a lot lower, basically beyond the heavy offensive levels. Obviously there are more people on the road. But in this particular area, we are seeing that volumes are generally getting back to, back to where, not even necessarily new normal, but basically back to the old one. So with that information, we wanted to go back and now look at what are the volumes now with that adjustment factor? Really, as that was kind of the built-in reason why we didn't provide that direct recommendation for a traffic signal at that time. Included in that was also talking about potential coordination between signals. Obviously, this is a location that has a signal to east and west, a little further to the west, more closer to the east outside of the high school. The reason why that came to the plate is any design that we provide, any traffic signal, signals in that kind of close proximity would really require us to provide some kind of coordination between the signals to make sure they can get the green between both as you're approaching Park Street. So with volumes being almost 52% or something, all right, you take the 40 to 20, that's between 300 and 60. We would provide, we wouldn't be able to run a design at that point that had diamonds that would be able to provide us with that coordination correctly. So we want to make sure that we are getting back to that level. So we were asked, can we back up, take a look at where we are compared to the warrants now? So I keep saying the warrant, we're going to get to a little slide that we'll watch later about what that actually means. But so on May, it was May 9th, we collected new traffic counts at this location in order to use in our revised, or I don't want to say revised, but updated version of the analysis. In addition, police department also provided us, I know this is a little small, you don't have to read individual, every individual crash, but this is, the crashes that have occurred since the beginning of 2020 at this location, I'll press stop at this by saying may reported crashes. At this location, there's obviously some crashes that don't go reported, mostly that kind of vendor type where people walk away after, there's no report that goes with it, not enough damage. So there may be more than this. We were noted to 10 crashes since the beginning of 2020. Sorry, 10 reported crashes. We do know of two additional ones that just didn't have reports. Those are two that we actually do know of. We've also recorded, can't find exactly what happened to those crashes though. And off to the side, I do know one of these here, seven of the 10 crashes. We'll get to this, although more when we talk about some warrants. But seven of the 10 crashes are crashes that could be correctable by a signal at this location. So going back to the original recommendation that we had had in the study, we did note in the report that we knew that a signal would improve traffic operations that we knew, I say that would help with traffic safety at that location. But without the actual information, provide a guaranteed warrant. It's not an hard place to provide a recommendation because one of the biggest parts of adding any traffic signal in any location is the fact that you have to meet a certain warrant. These are warrants that are issued by Federal Highway Administration. There's nine of them. And in order to put a signal in at any location, you have to meet FD's one. You only have to meet one, but you have to meet FD's one to put it in. So similar to other types of traffic devices, whether it's just stop signs or things like that. We go by what's written into this document, which is a set of standards that we use across the US. It's just so that stop signs, signals, pavement marking, signage throughout from here to Kansas to California all look exactly the same. And that's for, so we don't violate, which is the first rule of traffic engineering, which is don't violate driver expectancy. We want the drivers to know what they're looking at and they want, should be the same type of infrastructure every time you see it, no matter where it is. It's why we don't want a stop sign familiar, for instance. A person would drive up, they don't think they need to stop because there's no cars. And then the next stop sign, they might think the same thing, even though that one, they really do discover. So this is part of the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Again, there's nine warrants, not all of them apply to every individual type of location. Best example is this, the ninth one on there, intersection near a grade crossing. We do that at locations near red roads because if there's a roadway that backs up over a railroad tracks, we want that to clear out if trains coming. So that's that type of warrant. That doesn't apply to this location, but it's, there's different ways you can pay these particular warrants. So the location that we were looking at here, which is Park and Central, similar to what we had done in the original study, we're really focusing on three of the warrants, which are warrant one, which is a certain amount of traffic volume over the course of eight hours of a day. And that's for both the main line roadway and the side streets. So you have to meet it on both roadways, different levels. Warrant number two is that same type of warrant, but it's over four hours a day. The volume's much different though, different thresholds to hit because it's less time over the day. And then looking at the crash experience, which are the three that really apply to this particular location. So through there, we do hit, meet one of the, one of those three warrants. It's warrant number two, it's the four hours of the day warrant. I could zoom in, this will be in the report that's presented to the board as well. In terms of also looking at the warrant number one, which is eight hour volume, we actually only need, under that warrant, seven of those eight hours, different thresholds though again for volume. So it's not apples to apples comparison between warrants, which is why the way we, a manual has set it up is we need to meet one in order to actually provide that installation. The crash experience warrant, we actually do not need because it's five correctable crashes over the course of a 12-month period. We only have a certain amount of crashes, which is correctable over a multi-year period. That's not to say that that doesn't improve the traffic safety at the location. We might not get the warrant, but obviously we show there's seven of those 10 crashes that are directly correctable by C. Those types of crashes are generally like angle crashes, someone coming down Chestnut, someone coming down Park, someone going through, leaving the stop sign earlier or through the stop sign at one. I keep saying Chestnut, because that's the conversation we're having before. So if I say Chestnut, I'm in a second. That someone leaving the stop sign and someone maybe in Park East now hitting that car. That generally would not typically happen when you have a truck signal at the location and that's someone who's running the red light, which is in itself illegal. So just as a general recap, going back to how the original study was written, the recommendation that we had provided at the time did not include a direct recommendation for a traffic signal at the location, generally because we could not prove that the volumes at that time because of COVID would necessarily support the warrant under a normal condition. Although now that we are back into that, again, not even new normal, but back to the old normal, the warrant for volume under warrant two is not this location, which would allow us to provide that recommendation. And TEC again, from there, would actually recommend, I see that's a location we've shown in original studies as well, that while we do agree that it would improve the operations at the intersection over the existing condition and improve the traffic safety over the existing condition as well.
Is that it?
Yeah, actually, I was just saying question.
Okay, great, thank you.
But I'm off to hear questions.
My apologies, have questions, comments, Mr. O'Leary?
Think I might.
Think you might.
I think I might. So it meets the one warrant for the four hour. What are the hours that you did it? What was it? What was the 8L? Was this four hour?
So we did the count from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So it meets five of the, under that particular warrant threshold, it meets five of the hours within the certain thresholds of that warrant, which would be, it's a curve, there's no individual number for each that you have to hit under the main line roadway, for instance. If you have a certain main line traffic, you have to hit a certain main line road traffic at that same time. So it's all based on, you have to have one, but you also have to have the other at the exact same time period. And you have to hit that four different times, at least during the day, four different hours. For that particular warrant, we get five, five hours, or more than the warrant actually.
It bears out what you're saying, Mr. O'Leary, for the timeframes in the morning, in the early evening, afternoon. Because it's, the most here is 7:00 AM to 8:00 to 9:00 AM and 3:00 to 4:00 to 5:00 to 6:00 is when the, I guess, you can't see it, but I can.
I'm going to try to zoom in.
Yeah.
All right. So and again, you also predicate the recommendation on the ability to synchronize the other signals, particularly Havel Street, High School, and then Park and Winter Street. My question in relation to the high school signalization, the way that it currently operates, my understanding is, is it's driven by the traffic coming down the driveway from the high school, stopping at anything else. How does that mesh with the flow of traffic on 62? It's just, it just interrupts it.
Sure. So when we say that the intersections are close enough that we would have to look at how coordination would work at the particular intersections, that doesn't one necessarily mean that we have to, have to put the coordination in. Because we can go, go direct observation during the time and realize, okay, the plating doesn't need to happen because maybe this is just a further way that, and there's no drivers and enough side friction and stuff between the intersection that doesn't necessarily allow the plating to go all the way through. That being said, individual times of the day, we can change the way the coordination works. The same that's running from 7:00 to 8:00 AM might not happen from 12:01, might not happen from 4:03. We can change the time at different times of day based on who's using what and when and from what location. So and we can do that even at the existing, even though this particular location would be a new traffic signal. We can provide that coordination to all other locations that would be, that would be hooked up to it. And when I say hooked up, it's as easy as a GPS unit sitting on top of the cabinet. Because all the way the coordination works is all it really needs, the basic type of coordination, is to have a time clock that's the same at both, all three or all two or however many are. So it just tells it, it's seven o'clock here, seven o'clock there, start your times. Because it's running on a certain timeframe that's all the same at each intersection. Overall, it doesn't mean each intersection approach is the same. It just means if this intersection has a total of 60 seconds for its full lap, full cycle, the other intersection is just running that same 60 seconds, but the green times allotted to different locations during that time. And that's all that really means. And then at any time, if there's a certain time period that really directs the school, is letting out, Park Street itself isn't necessarily fully heavy at that same time. If we wanted to, we could shut the coordination off during that time period. There's actually a lot of things we can do and a lot of mixes that we can do. And a lot of that has to do with a lot of the new intersections, same with the old ones, but a lot of the new equipment is better at this, providing the most up-to-date detection systems that pays all the green times on demand. If there's cars there, it's going to get a more green. If there's no cars there, it pays a less.
There are times now where from the high school back to Central Street, with the current, without a signal in Central Street, it's nearly backed up to Central Street from the high school. So how, we're talking about changing the configuration of the traffic because of this temporary, two to three year temporary situation with the Chestnut Street. I just don't see how at certain times, it's not going to move. And again, someone trying to get out of the high school, if you're going to synchronize the, the timing there to give them a gap to get out. The parents dropping kids off or kids trying to get out of the schools are going to be cutting back down through Oakdale Road and through Sherman Street and Oakdale Road in order to bypass that one light at the bottom of the hill and creating more havoc. I, you've probably heard, I'm, I'm not keen on this idea here. I think there are other ways to better control it. And we've been told before, even last time we were here, even for the chief, that it's very difficult to coordinate the Park and Winter Street and the Havel Street along with the interruption from the high school, to make it coordinated with another light in between. You're talking about four traffic signals in about a mile and a quarter, right?
Oh.
Yeah, mile, mile and a quarter, four traffic signals. I just, you know, we're talking about spending, you know, $600,000 to address a situation that may not be addressed well with the signal. I'm not going to deny that it would be safer for cars to go north, south on Central Street and get access to Route 62. And it's certainly going to be safer for pedestrians and bicyclists to get across 62 to go to the Central Park if there's a signal there. But to, to interrupt the flow of traffic on 62 with another signal, four signals within a mile to a mile and a quarter, I think we can spend $600,000 better. Again, we may not be able to solve the problem, you know, but we can enhance the situation, make it safer without causing additional, we have the backup now. You know, how that backup is going to be solved with additional light at Central Street, where it's already backed up from the high school to the Park Street Cemetery and sometimes back to Central Street. Out throwing a signal in there is going to solve a problem, I have no idea. And that's without, that's just when, you know, it's being triggered at the high school right now. And again, I understand you can change that a bit, but I'm not buying into it. I'm buying into it. Again, the reason that the current proposal is to break it out is the pedestrian crossings at Central Street is critical, you know, that needs to be addressed. But this other additional signalization, I don't necessarily.
Mr. Stewart?
So if we, no matter what we decide on Chestnut to do, whether it's bridge, cove, whatever it is, there's gonna be a time period where that shut down. And it seems like one of the remedies was that we would have to put a temporary light. So meaning, aren't we gonna kind of get our answer whether we like it or not, if we just wait? Because if we put a temporary one, I don't know how, I don't know if temporary ones can also be coordinated, I don't know, like the timing, like the temporary lights, if that's the case? Like if there's a temporary signal, can it be coordinated the way a permanent one would be?
It can be. The volumes would be obviously a lot different.
So, one way or the other, we're gonna have some sort of construction where Chestnut Street's gonna be shut down for X, it's just a matter of how long depending on the project. So I feel like whether we like it or not, we're getting a temporary light there, unless, if I understand, and here's the question, is there any way, because this will kind of help me decide on where I stand on this, is there any way to do the Chestnut Street project, whether it takes six months or two years, without putting a temporary light at Central?
Necessary.
I mean, we haven't done like the full analysis yet for what they, the chestnut condition, obviously because that's more of a newer thing that we start to look at and talk about the signals, but based on what we know about the volumes going through that intersection, and this is for the chestnut condition, what I'm seeing right now, just for people who are the same, stuff like that. For that chestnut northbound approach, we're looking at potentially from, depending on what hour of the day, up to 400% increases in traffic on that one approach.
So.
From people, and now this is assuming that a certain large percent of the traffic is now gonna divert there, is it's the rough that's running still from where Chestnut Street is right now. So the simple solution would be to drive up Central instead. Not everybody's gonna do that, because people are gonna self-diverge and things like that.
So, but it seems that, this is what I think, I mean, whether we like it or not, depending on what we do, we may get a, you know, a kind of a dry run of what a light would look like there, right? Because I think that's what, I guess, I don't wanna say what good's coming, but I think that would make my decision easier and maybe the board's, because then somebody could come back, you know, hopefully this project doesn't take forever, but could say, hey, we've had a temporary light there for six months, and we'll see driving there in the community what it does, right? I mean, if it's, if we can coordinate it the same way, we can be like, oh, look what the light did. And granted, under different circumstances, not the same, but, you know, it seems that the question becomes, from a safety standpoint, can we afford to wait while we end up knowing what this other project is going to be with the culvert or the bridge replacement and how long and when it will start? Meaning if it was something where when you come back with your research, Mr. Parisi, it's that, okay, if we do it this way, we can get this done and start it in a year, then the question becomes, can we safely wait a year and maybe take some alternative measures, not the signal, then knowing a signal's coming? So I just think that that's something the board should consider, that we may have this data forced upon us with the signal, whether we like it or not, from other things, so, you know, I'm not, I think that will either prove you right or wrong, Mr. O'Leary, at that point. And it's something where it might be out of our hands from a safety, like a volume standpoint, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't need to wait, I'm already a data-driven decision maker and the data is staring us in the face. When you have a metric that says seven out of the 10 accidents could have been avoided by a traffic signal, what more do we need? Well, we need to make this analysis on the warrant, and it meets at least one of the nine warrants. And if you even actually dig deeper into that data that's right in front of our eyes, you, you're missing some green points here only by a few cars. So I don't know what the, what the basic minimum volume you were looking at far these were, but you're missing the data. We're not the Flintstones, we're in a technology age that surpassed the Jacksons at this point. So we should really be looking into modern technology as to how these lights are managed in a way so that we can avoid traffic backup. Unfortunately, it already exists as we know without the light there, because like Mr. O'Leary's mentioning, sometimes that traffic goes way, way back. It's because they did shut down Oakdale, so they can't shut down streets. Parents are not allowed to go up and down Oakdale to access the high school in the morning or the afternoon. And from what I understand, that, that is enforced, so.
No, it's not.
So they do do that, so they do do that and they do reroute the traffic. Even though those are public ways that people should and could be able to access to get to the high school, there's a whole traffic pattern that's been established for public safety. So we're not lighting gaslights with a big long stick anymore, we're using all of this advanced technology to be able to manage things. And we should be, you know, in, it's, you know, it's the age that we should be able to be utilizing the technology that exists to be able to manage traffic flow. No one's sitting there lifting up and down, blue and, I mean, you know, red and yellow and green, you can go now, you can stop now, or no one's sitting there doing a switch. This is technology that's available, it's state of the art, and that's what we should be looking into to be able to manage things. I don't need any more than what I had for data. I didn't actually believe, when this was studied during COVID, that that was the case, that we didn't need a traffic signal. And now this data is staring us in the face, showing us we do. So we should be doing something for public safety purposes and also incorporating in some modern technology that's able to manage that traffic flow better amongst the lights, including the ones that already exist there.
Can I agree, Bob, you know, because he's pretty likable?
In my opinion, I don't see the point in doing a temporary light that's gonna be necessary to be there when this Chestnut Street project happens. Let's just get the light up there, let's just get the permanent light up there so that it's there. I mean, if it can't be there before this starts, we get the temporary light, but in the meantime, we're working on that permanent light to be there. I just, why spend all that money on a temporary light for two, three years? That seems like a huge waste of money, let's just invest it into the permanent light, that's probably gonna happen anyway, most likely, that's my opinion. Please, yes.
Two things, first thing I want to go back to, one of the conversations before, is looking at if there was a temp signal here. I'm saying that just because these theoretically separate projects theoretically, is to take whatever you see with any temp signal as a great assault, because we do expect there to be a lot more volume going through that intersection under that condition.
Understood.
With anything that would be permanent. In terms of anything with a permanent signal, just to give an idea of how any scheduling with that work regardless of design or anything like that, is if we did do a permanent signal at that location, it would require, you know, mask arms, steel mask arms going over the roadway such as holding single heads over the road, and those have a very, very long lead time at the moment, so if we're talking about the potential for a bridge closure, that might have to happen now, and a temp signal to fix that issue, which could theoretically be put up rather quickly because of the workings of what a temp signal involved versus what are permanent. There's a much different scheduling time in there, just for even the construction alone and the designing with it, so just caution of the, do the permanent now and you, I just don't want people to think who may be listening first on TV, for instance, that if the permanent signal was the solution or something that the board voted to do or not our fund, that would not be up and running, even if we started construction now for, even for now, six months from now, just for construction wise. So, because of the lead time on putting concrete in the ground, et cetera, things like that.
What is that lead time? How long does it take?
If I were to order a mask arm, the steel for that right now, we're talking 20 weeks just to have that delivered, and that's, we haven't designed it yet, we haven't. So, and that's, there's no contract, there's no, so there's time involved with that kind of stuff as well. As opposed to a temp signal, we're using basically what's gonna look like utility poles, if we were to do something like that with span wires and do it like that, because it's meant to be temporary, something that we can do quick, knowing that we had a certain amount of time before, for instance, the bridge closure might have to be in place.
And, yeah, I just also want to point out, the way that it was put in the warrant was separated out, we talked about that, because I do think, at least I thought when we discussed it before, we were all in agreement that at the very least, there should be some pedestrian signalization there. So a portion of this, as it's been placed in the warrant, is, I believe, for that type of light, which I hope that, that will be supported, and I hope that that can move forward regardless of what's happening on, you know, how quickly we can get the rest of the Chestnut culvert issue squared away. Because I think we were in alignment, at least as a board, at least for that aspect of it, and the other calming measures that were, that were being considered.
That's the question, yeah, I think we were all in agreement on that, Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, I concur, absolutely. I concur. And again, I would be in favor of, again, moving forward with that aspect of project. Again, this whole Chestnut Street thing, to this gentleman's point, I mean, you're talking thousands of vehicles that use Chestnut Street right now that are gonna be diverted down Central, the vast majority would be diverted up and down Central Street as currently proposed. I think we need to talk about that a little bit more too, as far as being up Central Street, you know, from the eastbound, heading eastbound, but, yeah, so the counts are gonna be significantly more than what's currently there now, as you said, 400%?
Yes, because based on the amount of people who are coming up Central right now, and basically the amount of people that are on Chestnut right now in that same direction, if you were to transpose all those people doing the same thing now, again, people will self-diverge.
Right.
Looks like there are potential could be other things that people get pushed on the roadways, but I think absence of, let's say, doing any of that.
But 400% of backup heading north on Central Street is gonna be beyond Innsbruck Park and back onto Chestnut Street, well, it will be back.
And then number Central, by the way, not the park, the park would be less.
No, I know, but in terms of saying, no, Central Street on a temporary basis is going to be backed up to New Street, back around the corner.
I'd love to hear from the police department what they have to say about this.
So when this was presented back in 2021, we did, it wasn't their recommendation, but we had felt that the light would be best for that control on the traffic and making it a safer vehicular and pedestrian. But like Mr. O'Leary said, the telling point is seven out of 10 accidents preventable with signal lights, seals the deal for us, but I don't see why, at this point, we would recommend anything against from what TC's recommended. So we would like to see the traffic signals there as well.
Thank you.
I think I'm supporting traffic signals being there. I think it makes sense, I think that it's gonna, it's gonna stage getting through there during the busy times, but I also think people are gonna start to figure out, I can't go down that street if I wanna get through, so I have to work around, I have to do something else. And so I think traffic behavior will change, I think people will come to learn that that's gonna be a difficult spot for them to get through. And I've seen accidents there, I literally was standing there when it happened, I didn't even get in the accident. It's never gonna be safe without signals in my mind, it's just not gonna be safe. There's just too many risks, even with the physical improvements, I just think it's not conducive to anything else but having signals there. So I should come, I'll pick up the mic here.
So one, that just got me a new question, still want to, thank you. So, and this is to Chief Murph, maybe you can answer it, but, so I've already thought about in my head how I'm gonna get around this, and I thought about it, okay? Most people, if you wanna get around it, but you're still gonna get to Main Street and you're willing to just travel, because you know how sometimes you're willing to add some mileage to cut down on time? Everyone's gonna spin around Havel up north. North Street has its own problems.
That's what I would do.
But hold on now, North Street without added traffic has major issues. I travel it every day for work, into Benevento Fields, to everything, so it could be a, again, I'm not, I haven't made up my mind either way, but is, do you think, or is there any way to even tell, would that be an unintended consequence of putting another 1,000 cars on North Street flying? There is no, I know there was somebody there with the speed trap, but North Street is the closest we can get to NASCAR or North Reading. And a part of it, you can't really do much if you're coming down, I mean, I get it, but that's my thing, that North and Central, I think is worse than Central and Park, that's just my opinion. And, and I, and I get on the street and I got a little bit of acceleration in my car and I almost get rear-ended. And I'm, and I get to 35 miles an hour real fast, so my concern is.
You know who you're talking to?
I'm just being honest, though, I mean, like, you've got the data, I mean, I've been only on North Street, I've been in North Reading for five years, and people have been driving this, but do you have concern about that, that if too much traffic deviates to North Street, we have, you know, over here now, life is great, and now all we do is move those seven out of 10, we had, you know, more issues on North, so.
I mean, it is a concern, so we talked about this the other day, there's two roadways that get you from the center of town to Main Street, and that's North Street and Park Street, when Chestnut Street's closed, so there's only two roadways there. So everybody's gonna find their own way and it is gonna have more traffic, you know, that intersection doesn't meet the warrant, so that, which is, bringing a signal light up isn't an option.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm just kidding.
We talked about other traffic calming devices such as, you know, the speed humps closer to, after you get from, they'll be going towards North Street. Doesn't add much traction yet, but I've been trying to push that a little bit to see if that is an option. I don't think the residents would love that, that live close by there, but certainly saw the traffic. We've done a lot of complaints over the last three weeks since it's been paid, similar to Chestnut Street and just, I guess, human nature, people, smooth ride, faster ride, and, you know, we do what we can for enforcement, but, you know, we're out there educating, trying to do what we can, but we have concerns over this whole thing if there's a close on Chestnut Street. I mean, we all sat there and really, we don't have the answers at this point, right? We're kind of in scramble mode too, but we, we need to, we need to come up with a plan fairly soon, and that plan's gonna be adjusted as we start to get into the actual traffic patterns. And, you know, part of the suggestions today about no turn, or no trucks on Central Street, we need to look at that. It's not just an easy no trucks, put signs up, there's regulations that need to be met, so we will work with that as well. But, yeah, we're gonna have to, this is gonna be a continuous fluid traffic plan, that's gonna change over time, and it won't be as long, but it doesn't sound like it's a short-term plan.
And again, this, that was just my main observation that, you know, if you know your way around town, like you said, you're gonna divert to it, but it's kind of like, you know, Waze was great until everybody started using Waze, and now everybody goes there and it's worse, so almost like whatever Waze tells you to do, don't do, because everybody else is going. And I feel like here's the same, where Park and Central will get better, it definitely will with a light. I mean, it will be slower substantially, but it'll get better. But my concern is on the other end, where now it's still the Wild West, and it's kind of like, well, if I have to get to X on Main Street, you know what, I'll take my chances with the extra half a mile versus getting stuck at three lights. And I think a lot of people are gonna have that, and that's just my concern, that, you know, you got, you got a lot more people in a rush on North, and it just, it would just, just something to keep in mind. And again, it just, I don't know if we can even, I mean, that's an impossible study, right? I mean, what are you gonna say, what happens if there's another 500,000 cars a day on North Street? I don't even know if that's possible, and I'm one of those who we said that we study way too much stuff here, I mean, you know, you would think everybody's a PhD in North Reading, but I do have concerns with that, because I think North Street is more dangerous than, you know, Park and Central at any point.
So aside from danger, I mean, I'm just thinking for myself, when I'm coming down Central onto Park during school time, I'm way back here somewhere, and you're playing chicken just trying to get out of there. You're just, nobody's gonna let you go, you're trying to edge out, and you take the first shot you can get, you know, it's just the way you have to get out of there. So everything else aside, that would be fixed, and people would, I don't think people would divert, at least from Central, it would be more appealing, like, I'm gonna have a moment that that light's gonna change and I'm gonna be able to go, I don't have to play chicken anymore.
Just in relation to Sherman Road and Oakdale Road, statement was made that it's being enforced, it's not being enforced. Prior superintendent and this superintendent has not asked the police department to enforce the roadways and the use of Sherman Road and Oakdale Road. It's now used primarily. It's now used primarily for school buses to get in and out of the, the school easier than going down to the light and all the way up and around, because they, they enter on that side of the school, is where the school buses are dropped off, so they're using Oakdale Road and Sherman Road. But you could ask my neighbors on Sherman Road and Oakdale Road whether or not during the course of the coming and going of the school hours, you know, there's still a significant amount of traffic that's being utilized, kids in particular, and parents, and even at pickup time. People go on up Oakdale Road, parking on Mead Road, which is a dead, to the right is a dead end, and Sherman Road, and in the corner of Sherman Road on the opposite side of the street, waiting for their children to get out and walk and get picked up. They're not driving up to the driveway, they're not driving up to the pickup area. If you can go there anytime in the morning, being dropped off and being picked up, it's on Oakdale Road, Mead Road, Sherman Road. So it's not being enforced, the prior, I've had conversation with the prior superintendent and this superintendent, they're not intending on, they have some signs up there, so it helps, but it's not being enforced, and the police department's not being asked to enforce it by the school department, so...
All right, I think we should get back to the general premise of this conversation.
Chief had a comment.
Chief, please, yes.
We can't enforce, there's nothing to enforce, there's no law, it's a public roadway. What they do have is they have barricades at the schools, if you come, you can't, there's no way you pick your child up there, so what the parents are doing is going to your, your streets, and kids are running across the street picking them up, so, I know the superintendent has sent out notices to ask them to not do that, but as far as our end of it, there's no enforcement because there's no violation of law, so...
And when we were on the, when we were building the school, and again, the board was involved in the conversation, too, there was concern being raised, first of all, during construction, but also, you know, what's going to happen after the fact? You know, and the residents of Oakdale Road and Sherman Road in particular were, given assurances that, you know, there would, there would be controls in place to ensure that it wouldn't happen. You're talking about another traffic light at Central Street, and with the delays that are going to be taking place, there's going to be a significant more volume of traffic coming, both up and down, but particularly in the afternoon, coming down, and then taking a right or a left onto Park Street, in order to, particularly right, heading westbound on, on Park Street, to avoid the light, even the one light, because that traffic signal, if it's going to be synchronized with the other three, people coming out of that high school driveway will be backed up past the fields and up the hill. That isn't the case right now, because it's being triggered by the high school light, that's what's triggering the, the red light on, on 62, to allow the traffic flow to come out of the school, more measured approach. It's going to be backed up, but it has to be synchronized, and it's going to be synchronized, we have all the modern technology to do this, apparently, it has to happen, otherwise the traffic's going to be backed up on 62, and it's, Mr. Studo's going to be going on North Street.
You haven't picked up a child at the high school in a while. It is backed up all the way up the hill.
Oh, Mr. Studo's going to go to Linfield.
All the way up the hill.
And I would rather see a backup than have a crack.
That's just a fact.
So you wait a little longer, so you don't get in an accident. I think we should wrap this up. Mr. Gilbert, were you looking for anything specific?
Just responding to the board's request for additional, what ended up being updated information. It remains on the warrant, two separate lines, $250,000 for intersection improvements, including the pedestrian crossing, $350,000 separately for roadway, red light, yellow light, green light, traffic people at that intersection.
So can I take a consensus from the board? I know where Mr. Leary stands.
Source of funding is what?
On that. Do we have the warrant, do we have the warrant?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe.
For both segments, multiplication of warrants, so, two thirds of them.
So can I take a consensus from the board? I know this is no problem.
I, I think that there should be traffic signalization, just on the data that we, we know exists.
Mr. Studo, I know you're conflicted, but...
Well, I'm conflicted, but I think, I'd like to hear more if we're going to be in an opportu, I mean, it's not the same, but we might get a try-before-you-bye moment, whether we like it or not, so, I mean, I just think that, I, I haven't, I know what Mrs. Mani Pelli said about the data, but, again, my, my bigger thing is that I, I just, I think it, we should just wait and see on what we, what some of maybe the other measures, because again, even at CIPC, I wasn't against the idea, it was more of like, there's some other measures that would have to come first, or could come first, at a much lower cost, so that, that's still where I'm at. I'm not, I'm neither for or against the traffic signal yet, but I know I'm in the minority on that. I'm like neutral, like no break, like the car wash.
Switzerland.
Switzerland.
I think I'm in favor of the traffic signals.
I just have a, another question, Mr. Studo. Just in relation to, again, I'm in favor of putting the signalization in there for the pedestrians and bicyclists, for sure, to me, and so I think we're all unanimous in relation to that. As far as, if we put in that technology to upgrade afterwards, and again, this whole temporary thing is still pending, too, what would it take to upgrade the signalization from just the pedestrian crossway to the regular full signalization? Is that going to be, is the pedestrian one just going to be stationed on a pole, or is it going to be an overhead?
I believe the recommendation at the time was rectangular flashing would be poles, so those are the ones like on the pole, on the side, pole mounted with a sign right on that pole. So if any traffic signal were to be put in at that location, those would come out, and if there's crosswalks, would be signalized through a normal walk-don't-walk system, protected more so than the, I've written the flasher, these are flashers directly, so...
So the pedestrian, how do they, so, just press the button like a normal?
Yeah, both conditions would have basically a push button, it's just whether or not one is controlling a walk or a don't-walk, or one's controlling the flashing lights on a flasher.
Right, but if you put in full signalization, there still has to be a pole for pedestrians to cross, there still has to be some sort of...
Yes, and there would be a push button for them to...
So, so the stanchions are still going to be there, still would be utilized, it's just...
Yeah, it would take the flashes off, the signage off, and then it would be replaced with whatever new thing we put on the pole because of new type of crossing system. The cross systems are different, but there's still a push button, there's still a pole if the line's on.
So that gives me another question. So if we go ahead and put this pedestrian crossing in, but then we decide to do the light, that comes down, and then that becomes on the light, so we've just wasted all that money?
Not necessarily, you know, the poles would get reused, the buttons you could reuse at some other point there, and some of the things you'd have to reprogram, which are like, the flashers, you could put in storage and use somewhere else in the town, if you decided to put them some, some other improvement somewhere else. It's not, it's not like you're supposed to directly to the garbage or something, just stacked till the next time you need it. But now, instead of having to order it from someone, you have it on hand, not to be installed somewhere else if you've decided to put something else somewhere. So, but again, the poles get reused, the foundations, those poles are going to get reused, there's other improvements that go with that, with the ramps and things like that, that would be the same no matter what you do.
Right.
And we would design, when the signal got to a full design, or something like that later, we would incorporate, if the pedestrian improvement was already put in place, yes, we would design in such a way to make sure those could all stay.
Or just put the light with the pedestrian crossing on it, and you don't have to do the other thing at all.
But 300,000.
You know, when you think about the signals, it's actually, the accidents don't happen when it's busy, because people are going slow, it happens when it's not busy, and when there's people are going faster down the road. So the time to have your signals on is when it's not jammed up, it's not at the prime times.
I don't agree with that, I'm sorry, because I, I live that, and it's, like I said, it's chicken time, and when you're playing chicken, and you're shooting out, and this person didn't slow down enough, and you thought you could make it.
There's times when it's not busy, and I'm slowing down to let either a car just cross over, and I'm getting beeped at, and the person's trying to come around me in a single lane, because I've slowed to just try to let someone get across, and that's to be like, why not?
I'm saying, you have the signals when it's not busy, you really need the signals when it's not busy, because that's when people are more aggressive, because they can fly through.
But you need them when it's busy, too, because like you said, you can't get out.
I think you just got to go full signalization, and you get smart, you know, through experience you figure out when to...
I mean, I'm starting to feel like not even do that pedestrian thing, because the pedestrian thing can be built right into the light.
But, and again, just looking at the, at the data here, there's a significant member of the, number of the accidents that were actually rear-ended.
We're never going home.
It's, it's a rear-end, it's not a, no one's saying broadside, it's, it's a rear-end.
I've been almost rear-ended.
So that's because they go it out, they stop, and you think they go in, do you think the person in front of you is going, and they don't, and you hit them, you know, so it's, it's not like they're getting broadsided here, but...
No, but my fear of just the pedestrian is that's not going to be enough for people to stop.
Oh, I, oh, I agree, I'm not saying that, I'm saying you have the full signals.
Full signals.
I'm saying you have the full signals, and you just go right from the start, and then if you, you know, when it's really, really busy time, will be the time when the traffic itself slows itself down, but you can't get through. And if these things are smart enough, which I think they are, when it's not busy is when people are going faster, and they'll tend to, you know, go fastest through, and then you have less chances of avoiding accidents, so I mean, that's just, just thinking.
All right, so that's, okay, so Mrs. Mani Pelli, yes.
Full signalization.
You are Switzerland.
Full signalization.
You are full signalization, you are just pedestrian?
Correct.
And I'm full signalization. So we have three who are full signalization. Mrs. Mani Pelli, do you feel that way, too?
Oh, definitely.
And Chelsea, I thought the other day, you were okay with the pedestrian one?
I'm okay with the pedestrian.
Okay, so it's...
For right now.
Definitely the pedestrian. Yeah, so, so it's 5-0 on the pedestrian, and 3-2 on the...
Well, I now just feel like we don't need the pedestrian, because we can put that right into the full signalization.
Well, of course, if you're going to do the full signalization, it would be a priority to it, absolutely, I know, but, yeah.
All right? We can wrap that up?
Yeah, that'll... And the extra equipment, we always get rid of the town-wide yard sale every year, the flashing lights.
And by the way, I appreciate the effort that was put in to get these updated traffic counts, I think it was timely, and I'm glad they were able to accommodate the request. The TEC, thank you for accommodating the request.
And so now we're an hour and 15 minutes late for a public hearing.
Oh, jeez.
Madam Chair, just to end where I began with my comments, can you come here, right there?
Yeah, you're all set.
So tonight was a discussion about a warrant article and a request for funding. There will be a design process that will need to take place, and we're talking about a permanent, not a study, but an actual design that needs to take place, for which we still do not have funding in place, but hope to have funding after the June 12th town meeting, so, you know, I think we had a lot of good conversation here, and I certainly appreciate the feedback, but when we're talking about the design, there's a lot more that will be to be done.
It's not going to happen in six months.
Certainly work to be done, and then there's another intersection in front of it at Havel and Chestnut.
All right. So, notice of informational hearing. In order to select board, those hereby notified residents of the town of North Reading, that an in-person and virtual informational hearing on the following articles contained in the June 12th, 2023 town meeting warrant will be held, Monday, May 22nd, 2023, at 8:00 PM, or 9:20, Town Hall, Room 14. The hearing may also be assessed virtually, via phone, via internet zone. This hearing will represent an opportunity for residents to learn more about the articles on the town meeting warrant, to ask questions, and to engage in discussion in advance of the spring annual town meeting. A listing of warrant articles is as follows. Article 1, FY 2023 Budget Amendment. Article 2, FY 2023 Capital Budget Amendment. Article 3, FY 2023 Capital Budget Amendment, since that tariff athletic field. Article 4, Fund FY 2023 Snow and Ice Deficit. Article 5, FY 2023 Appropriate Funds to Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Article 6, FY 2023 Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Article 7, FY 2023 Appropriate Funds to Stabilization Fund. Article 8, FY 2023 Transfer Funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. Article 9, FY 2023 Transfer Funds to Auto-Stabilization Fund. Article 10, FY 2023 Appropriate Funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund. Article 11, FY 2023 Transfer Funds to School District Reserve Fund, for unanticipated unbudgeted costs for special education out of district tuition or transportation. Article 12, FY 2023 Appropriate Funds for Legal Expenses, 20 Elm Street. 13, FY 2023 Appropriate Funds to Cover Grant Deficits. Article 14, Create Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund. Article 15, Friday Sales. Article 16, Select Town Officers. 17, Guarantee Act on Reports of Town Officers' Disabilities. 18 and 19, operating budget. FY 2024, operating budget. Article 20, FY 2024, One-Time Fire Department, Recruit and Paramedic Training. Article 21, Fund Retirement Obligations. Article 22, FY 2024, Appropriate Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Article 23, Authorized Treasurer to Enter into Compensating Balance Agreements. 24, Rescind Authorization to Borrow. 25, FY 2024 Capital Expenditures. 26, 2024, Fund Town Building Repairs. 27, 2024, Authorized Chapter 9, the Highway Construction Funds. 28, Authorized Director of Public Works to Accept Easement. 29, Grant Easement on Zero, Wilmer Road, map 13, parcel 131, and 6, Elmer Road, map 13, parcel 93. 30, Appropriate Money for Historical Buildings, 31. 2024, Fund Consultees for Transgressions, AA, and GLC 48. 32, FY 2024, Fund American with Disability Act, Self-Devaluation and Transportation Plan, Article 2. Article 33, FY 2024, Appropriate Funds for Disability Needs Assessment and Transportation Pilot. Article 34, Increase Revolving Fund Limit, Elder Services. Article 35, Citizens Petition. This hearing is held pursuant to Sections 18 through 25 of Chapter 38 of the Massachusetts General Law, Sealed Meeting Law. Any interested citizen is welcome to virtually attend and participate in this hearing. Notice of explanation. Mr. Gilbert?
Madam Chair, through you. I'll go through the customary PowerPoint presentation on each of the warrant articles. I will try to move more quickly through those that are more routine in nature, but certainly am happy to answer any questions that might come up. If I could ask Mr. Austin if we could at least dip the legs just a little bit, maybe with the slide there, that would be great, thank you so much.
Good, good, Mr. Austin.
I will start with a note. Some may have already noticed that when you received the mailed version of the town meeting warrant at your home, noticeably missing was the detail on the fiscal year 2024 operating budget. It's about 18 pages worth of information, over 100 lines worth of information regarding the budget appropriation. So we are working to get something mailed to homes to provide that information, and while it's not entirely clear that it's a requirement that it be mailed, we certainly want to provide that information. It's the culmination of nearly six months' worth of budget work by a lot of folks, and purely due to an oversight, it was not included in the printed version of the warrant, so look for something further in your mail coming as soon as the early part of next week with that additional detail. Those who are watching this hearing and have been at many meetings before are familiar with most of the detail that's in that document, but we want to make sure it gets to the hands of our residents before town meeting.
Thank you.
Going through. A quick update on our cash reserves, we do have funding that has been set aside and accumulated over the years, but the one I will point to is free cash, just over $5.6 million from that top line, because there are a number of warrant articles that will rely on that funding as a funding source. Going right to Article 1, Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Amendment. We work with departments at this time of year to identify where there might be any shortfalls, and we make recommendations to the board, usually the evening of town meeting with any appropriations. I'm not sure that we have anything directly right now pending any operating budget, but there are other capital items that I will get to. I will just ask for folks who are at home, participating by Zoom, if you wish to be recognized in the hearing, I'm going to ask respectfully if you will use the raise hand function, so that you will get flagged right away, as your hand up, because I'm kind of managing a couple of different fronts here. so that you will get flagged right away as your hand up because I'm kind of managing a couple of different fronts here this evening. That said, I'm just gonna keep going to Article two, not seeing any hands up. Article two, the capital budget amendment. Again, this is a new article. We have not historically had this on here. We put it on there specifically for the turf field, which it turned out needs to be addressed in the next article. But we expect to be requesting funding for whatever temporary provisions are required associated with that culvert under this article. And it would likely be funding in the form of cash, which would reduce, transferred to the capital improvement stabilization fund under a future article. So just giving folks a heads up that that could be coming our way. What that dollar amount looks like exactly, you saw a number of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know that it will be that full amount. I don't know that it will be, that it won't be more than that amount. But I just wanted to make folks aware, particularly the finance committee, that that is something that could make its way to us. It was a hundred and fifty he had for the total at that point, but that is an estimate at this point and it was in all likelihood gonna be higher than that.
Any questions?
Going right to Article three. This is just purely changing the funding source for an already approved project that in fact will begin later this month for synthetic turf athletic field replacement. We had an error in the way this was approved at June town meeting last year. It was supposed to be funded from bond premiums, but it was actually approved to be authorization to borrow. We are not increasing the dollar amount, we're just changing the funding source to what we always intended to be, it to be funded by, to the capital improvement planning exercise last year. Moving on to Article four, fiscal year twenty-three, snow and ice deficit. This is a four hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit to be funded with free cash. Covers costs that exceeded our budget for the current fiscal year and would otherwise be carried over into next fiscal year. We avoid having to do that carryover by funding them with free cash during the annual town meeting. Article five, incorporating funds on capital improvement stabilization fund. As I mentioned, we have a balance of over one point four million dollars and we were looking to add one point five million dollars. You see the three asterisks up on the state on the presentation there. That's because, you know, that number in all likelihood will be reduced by whatever we need for that funding for the culvert related expenses. Again, I'm not talking about the design. I'm not talking about the construction costs. I'm talking about temporary provisions, signage, whatever traffic controls we need to do, et cetera, that we would expect to be brought forth. We just don't have, we're not ready with that exact number yet, but we believe it at least initially is in the vicinity of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're in a fortunate spot. We do have quite a bit that we're able to put into the capital improvement stabilization fund. We had a surplus, so to speak, in there from what we put in last year as well. So, you know, our efforts to direct funding there whenever possible, you know, are giving us a little bit of a cushion where we clearly can. Article six, other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. This is the portion of this account where we're not raising it on the tax bill for next fiscal year. We do that separately in our later article. This would actually to be put money above and beyond our current schedule for appropriating funding into this in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And again, we're looking to preserve that to the extent that we can and we believe we'll be able to. So it's just sort of putting more money in, you know, in addition to what we do as part of our regular budgeting process.
Madam Chair, I just have a question. This is, is our actuary, who's supposed to be helping us with keeping pace with our new hires and all the rest? So this is below what we were doing before. Then are we keeping pace?
So a couple parts to that. So this is putting money above and beyond what the pace was. The sort of keeping pace number, do you think it's three twenty-five right now, three fifty? Three seventy-five. That's in a later article, so we're still gonna make that, okay, contribution as well. But I don't believe we have that updated number yet from the actuary or my statement. So that number will go up. We don't, we don't have the updated number yet. But this is sort of the gravy on top of the three seventy-five we already do.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to follow up on that, when is our outstanding liability supposed to be fully funded? Do you remember what year that's supposed to be done?
I don't know.
Thirty thirty-six and then I got pushed out again.
Yeah, it was thirty-six. I wanna say forty-one, but I don't know.
It was thirty thirty-six and I think they pushed out to forty or forty-one.
Okay, all right. Oh, so we have time.
Some of us a little more than others.
Article seven, this is funding to the town's general stabilization fund, the so-called rainy day fund, and we are proposing to transfer three hundred thousand dollars into that account this year. That would be added to a balance of just over four billion dollars. Article eight, this is an amount that will be, will be determined prior to June twelfth and we generally are transferring a projected surplus in the trash and recycling appropriation into this account. We generally do it just prior to the end of the fiscal year, so we wait for the most current numbers. We've seen some favorable performance of that budget due to reduction in the tonnage that we're sending to Covanta as trash. But we also, as I think everybody knows, are looking to proceed and are proceeding with the reduction in the fourth quarter trash bill as well, which we're able to do because of some of that savings and because of credit received through Republic Services as well. So we don't normally have this number identified at this point. We usually peg that number down right at town meeting and that will happen again this year. We do have a balance of just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that, in that account.
Just in relation to the contract with Republic, did we get an extension or?
There's been no change in the term. I believe we have three years remaining on it. Mr. Priest, do you have that rate? And we have one year remaining on the disposal at Covanta. That's the one that's under negotiation. What we did receive is an annualized reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars per year based on transitioning to the five-day collection. That was prorated for this year and is part of our ability to issue that reduction in the fourth quarter bill.
Thank you.
Article nine, funding to the water stabilization fund. We have a balance of just under three million dollars that was largely aggregated over multiple years of rate increases in anticipation of the costs associated with going to the M W R A. We did not ultimately go in that direction and we were able to, you know, to utilize that funding for rate stabilization and I believe that maybe we need to do so. Again, we'll talk further about that at the rate hearing. There was a small amount of money. I just, I didn't have the number right in there. Will we be using it for another purpose, to retain earnings from last year? We're just gonna leave it, we're gonna let it sit. Okay, so we don't expect a transfer. It was a small, we hit right at the budget and remember the drought situation we were dealing with last year. But again, we were balanced, which is better than not being balanced, but only generating a pretty small surplus. So we may see that affecting the rate when we're talking about the rate of the June hearing.
We'll talk about the rate too, but just in relation to the rate and the credit that we received from handover, that was about a hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. We're in year what?
Probably five.
Five. So we have to, again, anticipate that going away. Remember, when we negotiated the deal, you invested a million dollars to go to the M W R A and they're reimbursing us through a credit every year over a ten-year period. That goes away in year ten. We're in year five now. So it's a hundred thousand dollars to make up at some point moving forward. You just said, gonna remain cognizant of it.
Yeah.
In case I get hit by a bus between now and then.
At Park and Central.
At Park and Central. Because there's no light.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because we don't have bus service and not threatening service. I'm not gonna get hit by a bus.
School bus.
School bus, man, yeah.
Right in Oakdale. Because they're allowed to go.
Article ten, appropriating funds to the participating funding arrangement fund. Transfer exists under four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, which reflects the surplus generated in active and fully health insurance in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. We would normally have made this transfer in October. We did not have free cash certified at that point in time. We're now making that transfer now to stay whole with our contribution. Again, there is an employee portion of this that is held separately in payroll deduction accounts as well. And as I think the board knows, we're going to dip into both the stabilization fund and that amount, and a small amount for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four health insurance, which I'll get to in a little bit. Going on to eleven, a request of the school committee for funds into the out-of-district tuition, transportation, and special education stabilization fund or reserve fund, excuse me. It's a hundred thousand dollars that we're recommending and that would be funded by free cash to go into the, into the fund. Article twelve.
I have a quick question on that. Thanks, Madam Chair. Is there a limit to the amount that can be placed into that annually because it's a reserve fund? Is there a maximum?
There may be and it may be a percentage of the town's overall budget. I don't think that we're close just based on the fact we can put a couple of transfers in there, but we can just double check that when we set it, when we set it up. But the balance, Ms. Kelvin, is?
Currently two hundred.
Two hundred.
Yes, thank you.
Article twelve, funds for legal expenses at twenty Elm Street. We continue to have a healthy balance there. We have not had a ton of expense up late. So we're not, we're not expecting to need to request approval, but we do keep that one article in there in case anything changes leading up to town meeting. Article thirteen, to cover grant deficits, and I know I've talked at length. We had a lot of federal and state funding coming in and out of the town's possession associated with the pandemic and related impacts. We were urged along the way by the program managers at the state and federal level to spend the money and spend it quickly and I recall being, not in this room, but on the computer, reporting that as the case. And like many communities after the fact, review by the federal state government programmers, identified some ineligible costs that need to be effectively paid back. And I do want to, you know, recognize that, you know, there was work, significant amount of work done on the part of the finance director, the acting finance director, to resolve those issues over the past year. And so we see there's three, three specific appropriations for cash to sort of make those accounts whole. So we're gonna do that. There have been previous years where this has happened as a mechanics of free cash and closing out the fiscal year, but that's not gonna be the case. So we're just gonna run right into town meeting and make everything whole. And again, I can't stress enough, we weren't alone in experiencing this. There were many communities that were subjected to this, to much larger amounts. Article fifteen, prior year bills are a handful that we're looking at right now, one of which.
Did you miss article fourteen?
Did, yes. Sorry. Clicked so quickly on the arrows here. Creating an opioid settlement stabilization fund. Town, like many cities and towns, participated in national multi-jurisdiction litigation to recover funds from manufacturers and distributors of opioid drugs. This article creates a special purpose stabilization fund to receive litigation settlement payments. Request for expenditures on the fund are anticipated to be submitted to future town meetings. Article fifteen, prior year bills, again, we do have a handful. First of which is eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars to be appropriated from free cash to cover an assessing expense bill. And then I believe the remainder, we believe can be funded out of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budgets. They were sort of broken down differently, so I swapped them around in the presentation here. But sanitation services for Hillview, six hundred dollars. Similarly, sanitary services for a hundred seventy-five, fifty from D B W. Training, education, and accounting for six, just under six hundred dollars. Backflow testing and water for six thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Those all are expected to be able to be funded out of the current fiscal year's budget, even though they are bills from prior years. Article sixteen, selecting town officers. This is an article authorizing the select board to choose town officers for which there is no other authorization and appointment process. Article seventeen, hearing and acting on reports of town officers and committees. I know it gets lost in the conversation sometimes and we're used to hearings to, to a handful of reports from boards and committees at town meeting. There is a lengthy annual report that is prepared by Karen Marlin in my office and contributed to by every department, board, and committee here in town and our regional partners as well that once available is put on the town website and we have generally printed copies here in the town hall as well. So, well, you may not hear the whole story in that article at town meeting. There may only be a couple of folks who speak. There is a lengthy written report that we also accept under this article that I would urge folks to take a look at. And you can look back until at least two thousand and thirteen on the town website for prior year reports if you're interested as well. So I just wanna, we don't normally point that out, so I kind of felt like I wanted to make folks aware that there's plenty of that information on, online, going back over multiple calendar years. And it is a calendar year report, so that folks know. Article eighteen, you know, keeping with our commitment to try to provide some avenue for relief. A very successful senior tax workoff program that began at five hundred dollars per year was increased to seven hundred and fifty dollars. We are now recommending an increase to one thousand dollars per year for participants and I believe we can absorb that through our overlay, overlay, excuse me, as part of our annual budget. It would require a little time. We have up to eighty participants in the program to win a little bit. Continue to have some participation, folks, and we welcome new faces. We're generally recruiting and soliciting interested parties in October, September and October for a program year that goes roughly mid-October to the end of September. Article nineteen, this is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget. This is not a budget hearing, so I'm not gonna go into a ton of detail other than to let folks know that it's an eighty-seven million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollar budget that will be raised and appropriated, including our enterprise funds, so that's Hillview, Water, and Parks and Recreation. We're required to vote it in two motions. So one is a majority vote for seventy-nine million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars. That is effectively most departmental, all departmental operating budgets. The two items, used to be one, now it's two, that will require two-thirds vote. One is our debt service, seven million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then there is a small part of our health insurance appropriations in the benefits line item that requires two-thirds vote because we are using P F A stabilization funds in the amount of forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. As I mentioned earlier, that is matched with on a seventy to thirty percent ratio funding that's in payroll deduction accounts from employee contributions over the years as well. That's just a town share of it. And I just, again, would just flag for folks that we usually have more detail in the warrant. Due to an oversight, it was not included in the mailed version. You're gonna be getting an updated version. Our goal is to send a totally revised article warrant, you know, so that it's got everything in it, including this information. For the off chance we can come to an agreement with the printer to do so in a timely fashion, you may see only a smaller supplement. But our hope is to re-mail the whole thing to folks, so appreciate their flexibility and understanding. Article twenty, one-time fire department recruit and paramedic training. Talked a lot in the budget process about these expenses. This proposal would utilize just over six hundred thousand dollars in free cash and just under two hundred thousand dollars from the ambulance reserve fund for one-time recruit and paramedic training costs related to a number of recent and anticipated retirements. This is proposed to be in an article because we expect that this effort will need to be supported over multiple fiscal years and so we can avoid needing to request additional funding next year or even the year after by having it sit in an article to be drawn from. And that's a practice that we utilize. It's been a while since we've done so. I think it was early two thousand and tens. But it is something that we're able to utilize and I think it makes the most sense so we're not back here talking about this issue and funding this issue again as soon as next fiscal year. Article twenty-one, funding retirement obligations. That's a hundred ninety thousand dollars in free cash, a hundred and thirty of which for municipal employees and sixty of which is for public school employees. So this is generally the buybacks, if you will, for, I think, the case of employees who are eligible for a buyback of accrued time.
That's actually flipped.
Flipped, are they?
Yeah.
Did I, did I write it that way?
I think I did.
Okay. Sixty for municipal, a hundred and thirty for?
One thirty for the school.
For the school? Okay. Thank you. Article twenty-two, this is the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we raise and appropriate right off the tax bill to go towards this cost, something that we know we're gonna have to update to more accurately reflect the costs. Something that at some point soon we're gonna probably start drawing from to cover those costs as well as we're moving, moving forward. But, you know, not this year and probably not next year. We just put on the radar that we're setting this money aside. There will be a point in time we'll begin to rely on the funding as a funding source for retiree health insurance. time we begin to rely on the funding, as a funding source for retiree health insurance. This is a standard article that allows the treasurer to enter an agreement with the banks where, rather than having to pay, pay for a bank in exchange for services, a portion of interest earnings on deposits are kept by the bank to cover the costs of those services. It requires town meeting approval to do so. Article twenty-four, rescinding authorizations to borrow. There are three, seventy-two thousand, four twenty-six left in a little school roof project that was authorized in twenty fifteen and supported with an MSBA grant. I think a number of the board members may recall that project was a pretty successful roof restoration project that really helped us with, to extend the life of the building. Replacement of the INET, maybe not the most well-known project, but one that allows us to have communication amongst our municipal buildings, information, telecommunication on our own network. There's a residual there that we can rescind the authorization for. And then three million dollars for water distribution and supply appropriations from twenty eighteen. Is that? I'm just seeing that. I was originally thinking that it was MWR related, but is it Andover related?
Yeah, we, we got the Masmark grants, and we were able to rescind the other thing on it. We originally appropriated six million.
We had six. So this was, this was three million in June of that year, it became six million, and we got a three million grant, which we've expended actually, other than maybe the final closeout payment. So we're reducing it. Okay. Thank you. Article twenty-five, capital expenditures. This is the capital improvement plan that was presented by the committee led by Mr. Keller here and approved by the select board. On the screen, all of the projects and funding sources, as well as the dollar amounts, these are also printed in your warrant, so I'd urge folks to take a look at that. There's a lot of notes going on with this article this year, and that's because we are relying on some recisions of borrowing, utilization of funding that's outside of the town meeting process as well. We're just trying to, you know, show folks that you may see a number for a project that you thought cost a lot more money, it's because it may be being offset utilizing other funds. So those are all noted in the, in the warrant. And through you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Galvin, I think we still believe this is one that could be funded as printed in the warrant. I don't think that this, there's anything that needs to be changed on that one. So that would be certainly good to be able to do, because there's a lot going on in this project for this year.
Madam Chair, just-
Yes.
I would request that the board request the moderator to at least separate it into three votes because of the Central Street intersection. If we try and vote it all at once, and it doesn't get a two-thirds vote-
Yeah.
-because of one thing on there. And again, the reason that we split it was to allow town meeting to make a determination as to whether they want full signalization at Central Street, which we already talked about. So I think we're going to need more than one vote.
Okay.
I agree.
Just ask the moderator. Moderator can divide it any way he thinks is necessary and expeditions, they can handle it. Can just separate those two out, vote the whole thing, the rest of it, or he can do what he wants, but we should be suggesting how we'd like to see it handled, and then let the town meeting decide on Central Street.
Sure. We just expect it for that three fifty, for no other issues that we know of at least.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you vote everything except for the three fifty, do that one separately. Everything else gets handled all at once, and the pedestrian signalization gets taken care of.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Keller.
Is this article twenty-five?
Yes, yes. You have the wrong.
It is, it's got the wrong title on it. It is article twenty-five. Do you have a warrant in front of you that confirms that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just don't have it in front of me.
I have written something, and I referenced article twenty-five on this.
Okay, thank you. So it is article twenty-five.
You kept adding extra articles in.
We did, we added, and then we didn't delete it. But it is article twenty-five.
Marathon number of articles.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Madam Chair, through you, funding town building repairs. It's a customary fifty thousand dollars for repairs and improvements to municipal buildings. We've got a number of small projects that are underway. You know, I'm just going to point the one that sticks out. You know, we're repainting the entryway over here on the west side of the building, where there are some steel structures and, you know, covered area that folks walk through, you know, just trying to spruce up the appearance to the extent that we can. We have a number of HVAC projects that are backlogged here in this building that I know that is from engineering that's happened on, and we're looking to have take place. You know, there's been, so there's work that's happening. Some of it has been capital in nature, some of it is coming out of these appropriations. I know that Mr. Wokel, the facility superintendent, is looking at the bathrooms in here, restrooms, and trying to make some improvements there as well. So, you know, not, it's smaller projects that can be disruptive, but certainly improve to the quality of the facilities, even though we are certainly aware that there's an ongoing facility master plan, but really no timeline for a number of the buildings right now. So this continues that program. Article twenty-seven, chapter ninety, this is the state's contribution to our local road paving program. We have a separate appropriation in the capital article that would fund paving in addition to this. So we're expecting five hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred three dollars from the state, based on two hundred million dollars statewide. And this is not an appropriation, simply an authorization to expend the funding. Article twenty-eight, a routine article, allow the DPW director to accept easements. This allows him to accept directly for a very limited field of easements that we are at times granted. There are no specific items that are pending at the moment that would be governed with this, but it allows for acceptance during the course of the fiscal year. Article twenty-nine, granting an easement at Zero Wilma and Six Alma Road. I know the board voted to recommend this article at the last meeting, and we talked about the fact that there are a number of things that have to happen besides town meeting approval before an easement would be granted or could be granted, certainly ultimately under the control of the board. But I asked Mr. Parisi to stay here this evening, because I know there was a question, well, why they're not able to take care of this on their own property, and why this is coming out. So I'm going to just say, if I could, just ask Mr. Parisi to comment on that question. We're talking about the threat of Subaru, which is on Main Street, and improvements being made to the rear of the property in the vicinity of, I think it's three residential homes.
Yeah, so I did contact the engineer and ask that question, and the response was, I think, what I anticipated as, well, high groundwater really prohibits use of that, you know, underground irrigate, under the parking lot to sort of recharge, you know, the stormwater into that area. So the only way to really drain it off-site would be to either go to the lower properties, which are the residential properties below this one, which we're trying, they're trying to avoid. So really, the only viable option would be to pipe it into the town's property, which is ultimately a stream that flows to Martin's Pond. So I don't know if you have further questions. I think we talked about what the, you know, the easement requirements were. It's a banking adjustment, I believe, to have, you know, most of the collection of the stormwaters on, on the private property, but the discharge would be on a public property, and that's the reason for the easement.
And the current discharge now just can't handle, or something is backing up and-
It can't handle. What I've seen as far as, you know, discharge is a couple of catch basins that really discharge to the lower section of the town's lot that's not, it's the opposite side of where the work stream would be. That is flowing down into the primary property and flooding the driveways of that property.
And we are still looking to engage those residents down there, again, who are not necessarily opposed to this necessarily, but they just want to make sure that the cause of the problem is actually recognized and then properly addressed.
Correct. What the discussion was last time we met on this was that they would have an opportunity, certainly, to participate in whatever meetings that there were, public meetings, if there are conservation commission most, most likely, to see that any resolution would be in their best interest as well.
I just have a question. Was that engineer's report prepared by the, the owners of the lot that want to funnel this groundwater into the city stream?
So the, the drawings that were produced for this easement were-
Town, town stream, not city stream. Ten, sorry about that.
Correct, yeah. So he was, he was working for the owners of the Subaru property.
Did we have our own person independently review it, engineer independently review it?
We did not, you know, have any kind of engineering, deep engineering review. I think, you know, Dan and I both have taken a look at that, but we haven't utilized any consultants to, to look at that in any detail. And it seems reasonable, though, that they are, you know, trying to pitch towards, you know, the lowest point that would convey the water, you know, to Martin's Pond.
Just to Mrs. Mani Pelli's point, a couple of weeks ago, or maybe four weeks ago, can it be achieved on their own property? You know, I mean, so obviously, our engineer or consultants would have to take a look at it, too. You know, what would it take for them to achieve it on, on their own property rather than town easement? Again, I'm in favor right now of authorizing us to grant the easement, just so that it can progress and move forward, if that's the only solution. But is there another solution? How much disruption would it cause them as owners, as far as lost parking space and all this? Because they're pretty tight down there, no doubt about it. So, but I imagine as we're going through the process here, the evaluation process, we'll have someone take a closer look at it rather than just taking their word for it as far as what can be done on their own property before we grant ours.
The, well, the response that I got back was to the question, you know, what can you do basically to resolve the issue in the owner's lot? And, you know, his response was, you know, because of the high groundwater, they couldn't do much as far as recharging the water back into the ground, which is their only option. Or, again, discharging two other low, low spots around them, which is the residential property and the town's property. But, you know, if there's, you know, some desire to have, you know, an independent look at their request, I mean, do we want to spend the money or just deny the easement? Is there something for the-
Well, I think there's, I think there's probably a need based upon a conversation with the residents down there. There's a need to fix, to address the problem.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a question of, is it the easiest route that they're looking to take, or is it the most viable? It may very well be the most viable.
Is it the worst desire to get it independent? I know, we, we talked about that. I didn't realize we were just going to rely on the same people that proposed it in the first place. Of course, they're going to say that's the only thing they can do. If that's not, to me, rocket science, that's what they would come back and tell you, but I don't have enough to really support it. Like I said, when we talked about this at length before, I think I know enough to support it.
We can certainly ask them to, you know, provide, you know, some funding for a third-party review of their design. I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
That would be a good idea, to support and read.
Well, I mean, we, again, I, I've seen, I don't know what, even if this goes, my understanding when we voted it last meeting was the same thing, that there are so many guardrails between town meeting giving the select board the authority to approve this easement at some point, if it even does, that I think by then, again, that there's just so much information that will come out, that I, I was comfortable with that, that, again, before it even gets back to the board for approval, there's just so many steps that, I mean, if they're all cleared, then at that point, I think it would make sense. But that's why I was comfortable going this direction. And then can you also, I mean, I know we did it with, when I was liaison on the CPC, we did it with some projects where if you wanted to do something, right, even a request for X, that if there needed to be some kind of design, like study or surveying, that it came out of the expenses of those that were seeking approval. Could we do the same here, where we hire an independent consultant or whoever you have to hire that is for the town, like works for the town, but paid for by, you know, the-
I think that's what you suggested.
Right.
Yeah, that's exactly what I suggested, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't. I mean, they're, they're asking the town for an easement. So, you know, we would have every right to want another, you know, review or evaluation on what they're proposing.
I, I just think that, like, you know, just to wrap that up for you, Madam Chair, is that if after, if all that comes back and everything checks out, I would be inclined to support it, but that's after we had data that we suck up, we sought out, not the town.
So if I understand correctly, we, we're just asking for the easement, but that doesn't mean that it's being approved. It has to come back to us.
We're the ultimate guardrail.
Yes.
So in other words, all we're getting is, we need town meeting authorization to grant an easement.
So we can get the authorization.
But we don't have to grant it.
Correct. So then we could then proceed-
Ask for the peer review of the data.
Yes. So it wouldn't be, Mrs. Mani Pelli?
What I object to with this type of proceeding is us learning about it without any backup data when it's going on a warrant. That's not right. I'm sorry, it's just wrong. And what I also wanted to have the finer details on is, this is being rerouted into a stream that goes into Martin's Pond. What precisely is being rerouted into Martin's Pond? I think those are important questions we need to know ahead of time. Kind of reminds me of that, not to bring this up, but it reminds me of us for the first time seeing on the, on the, on the warrant, the Betterment bylaw, all of a sudden for the first time. This is not right, that we're seeing it like this and here. It's okay where the guardrails. We should know what this is about, and we shouldn't be relying on a proponent seeking an easement to divert whatever is there, which we don't know, to the Martin's Pond, when we pay people to make sure that that pond, we, we can't even give them the five grand that they want this year to make sure they're keeping Martin's Pond, I guess, clean for people. So we, we really want to make sure we know what this is. I do, but I'm in a minority, obviously, because it was approved for, it was approved for getting the town approval. But let's know what we're even talking about here. I don't. So I'm not comfortable saying, sure, go ahead, we'll find out about it later. I don't think that's right. Again, I'm one of five, and I was a no vote on it when we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, because I didn't have enough information to recommend it. I'm pretty sure I was a no vote on it. Okay.
I was a no vote because I wasn't here.
You at least had reservations.
Yes. And I have the same reservation sitting here today.
But you're not comfortable with the fact that it doesn't get approved, and it's not being approved.
Why would we, why would we even put it on a warrant article without having that information? It's backwards to me. That's how I view it. And I object, and I've said this, to learning about it as we're taking a look at warrant articles for publication. We need to know this ahead of time. You know, like I said, people are taking care of Martin's Pond, and I don't know what's being funneled through or what's under there, or, you know, why they can't handle it on their own lot. I don't know what it is that's, that's being rerouted. I just recall that being the proposal.
Is there a layer?
Again, I'm not overly concerned. I don't mind asking town meeting for the authorization to do it, because, you know, from a timing standpoint, to get the project done, you know, do we have to wait till October or next June in order for this situation to be addressed on this property? And again, it's, it's private property that's impacting other private property, and what we have is some wet layers or easement here that we can grant in order to help alleviate the concerns. But again, the concerns that we have, do have, as Mrs. Mani Pelli's pointing out, those will be addressed, and we'll either determine that it's enough to grant an easement or not. That's also, this is basically giving us an opportunity to operate during the course of the, the next twelve months, if they get their act together and we get the peer review and we're satisfied, to address it. If they get their act together and we get the peer review and we're satisfied, to address it. Otherwise, we have to wait for town meeting action again.
That was my, my thing. I mean, one of my biggest pet peeves since joining this board has been that I feel like even when everything lines up, then there's like, you know, the calendar of approval that just derails, all good and bad. And my thing was that, let's say we got this information, Mrs. Manny Pelley, and it was like, all right, now you've proven to me, based on the data. But then it's like, if we are now, depending on where in the calendar, it becomes a, well, if June's too stacked, we can't do it in June. And then if October, so like, that was my concern, that if everything does check out, then we need to wait for X town meeting, and that, that's where I didn't... My concern was, this was a way of, like, balancing it, and I could see. You're saying we're putting the car before the horse. I'm saying the thing is that if we end up, you know, saying that that checks out sometimes, then the road for the horse to go has to wait for, you know, municipal government to have its meeting, so that, that was my concern. I can see you don't agree.
I, I agree. I, I believe we should, you know, not stop it from that. We need the easement to get approved. We need the authorization from town higher, from town meeting. And then we can, please, Mr. Perici, if you could go ahead and see if we could get approval for us to look further into that and get some more information. Agreed? Mr. Studo?
I, I voted like that last, two weeks ago, Madam Chair.
I know. Mrs. Manny Pelley, you would be a no.
I'm, I'm still a no.
There are no abstains.
I think we need to know about this. And I also think there was a, there was a mention, Madam Chair, about that there's a... They were neighbors, I think we talked about, right? I don't know where they stood on it or if they were aware of it.
I spoke to him as recently as half an hour before our meeting. I happened to bump into him. And again, he, he's the most vocal one and most directly impacted. He said he is not opposed to the easement being granted. He just wants the town and the board to be aware as to what the actual problem is and is being properly addressed, and if the easement is required, he would not be opposed to it.
Okay, all right.
But he just wants to make sure that we're aware as to really what's causing the problem and what the solution is, as far as whether it can be solved on their property or not. He's not concerned about that.
But we'll get that information.
Do you know, Mr. Perici, what it is? That's the problem. They're telling you it's groundwater? Do you have a-
You explained it last time. It was pretty clear, right? You, you saw it? You, you agreed?
Yes, he's, he's trying to, you know, drain stormwater that is flowing on his property to the lowest point on his lot, but once it's there, it's got to go somewhere. And where it's going is onto the neighbor's property, because the current drainage that he has, which is a couple of catch, catch basins that drain off onto another town parcel, um, just doesn't drain well. So, everything's just sort of flooding up, spilling over in different directions onto the neighbor's lots that are lower than this lot. So, their plan is to collect it all, the surface runoff that's, you know, draining on the parking, the paved parking area for the home park. Just like any paved roadway, it's all going to Martin's Pond. And this will also collect in a, um, an open trench that has dam blocks, basically to slow down the water's rush to the, to the, uh, the stream bed so that sediments can settle a bit and not, you know, rush into the stream and send pollutants into the pond as quickly as it otherwise would.
So, I think an important point there was that all of the, that all the roadways, it goes there anyway.
It, it all goes there anyways.
This would be different from anything else.
Correct, yeah, every storm drain that we have or catch basins that have discharges in that area are flowing there. So, it shouldn't be anything different. I mean, there are always oils that spill on the, on the asphalt, whether from traffic or, I'm not sure exactly what, you know, kind of, um, mechanical operations they may have there as well, but, you know...
And that is a good point. This is, this is a car dealership.
Correct, correct. So, I, so I think there's certainly a review, there are generally, um, meetings for approval of the project to, to require a third-party review, look at other, you know, ways of perhaps trapping any greases or oils or whatever. And, and if there are other means to deal with it on site, I don't know what that would be. I mean, could you capture it in an enclosed tank and then later somehow pump it somewhere? But, I mean, I think you still need the means to quickly move the water from their property into the, the point where it's going to flow away, you know, most effectively and not, um, have any kind of impacts on other properties downstream.
But to Mrs. Manny Pelley's point, I think it's important that we know what is flowing, because it is, it is a car dealership. It's not just a, a regular property.
Sure, we can get asked for some samples to be taken, I'm sure.
Article 30, money for historical buildings.
Is that it? Is that, did we, did we, yeah, okay. It looked like 29 was still up, yes.
Article 30, money for historical buildings, $10,000 from free cash for repairs, maintenance, improvements to the historical buildings located on grounds of the Reverend Daniel Putnam House. Again, as I think the board is aware, we have a long-term agreement where the property is overseen by the Antiquarian Society, and requests has come to us from the Minutemen militia to make another round of improvements similar to what we funded two years ago at town meeting at that location. Article 31, funding consultant fees for compliance with section, uh...
Excuse me, you didn't have a recommendation? I thought we recommended that.
Uh, we did recommend, the board did recommend, and I believe the Finance Committee also recommended.
Yeah, we also have already recommended it.
Yes, okay. Article 31, consultant fees for compliance with the MBTA communities. Zoning requirements is requesting $25,000 for free cash to fund consulting services to assist us with meeting new state requirements for MBTA adjacent communities for housing and zoning. Again, we believe that there could be funding sources available to us at the state level, but it's purposely chosen to go our own route and fund and contract with our own entity to help us comply. This would be beyond the work. The town planners are already doing the town council on this, on this map. Again, both Planning Commission and Planning Commission made the request. The Finance Committee, Select Board both recommended the article. Article 32, funding the Americans with Disabilities Act self-evaluation and transition plan. This is phase two. Phase one, having been partially funded with a state grant and town meeting.
Completely funded.
Thank you. $150,000 for something that we are, we are admittedly behind on doing and are looking to do some work to catch up with. Again, also, I believe through you, Madam Chair, the town planner, get us some points in certain grant programs or determine eligibility for certain grant programs. So, we know it's a big money request in terms of $150,000, but we also know that the potential impact is, you know, pretty large in scale as well when we look across the community. Article 33, appropriating funds for disability needs assessment and transportation pilot program. The amount they requested is $60,000, and we provide funding for disability-related needs assessment and to provide transportation services for residents on a trial basis. Madam Chair, I know there were some questions about this, and the board asked for additional information, and the Director of Public Services, as well as members of the Transportation Committee, are here to provide a few slides worth of additional information. I'm going to stop this slide, and I will put your presentation up, Lily. Yeah, I'm not sure how that, my computer did die and...
Marianne's home, too?
Yeah, Marianne's house, no. She did a fantastic job, too. The power of the press. The power of the press.
Yeah.
Thank you for bearing with me. I have your slides. I'll probably have to put those up there. And Madam Chair, three, may I turn it over to the Director of Public Services?
Please.
Um, I can slide it.
Okay, next one.
Can you, can you see them, okay?
Yep. So, this warrant article asks for $60,000 to both assess resident needs and also to offer some pilot rides. The first two slides show that the existing services for seniors and disabled veterans have a demand that's increasing. So, the senior center van did about 4,200 rides last calendar year, and in the first four months of this year, did 2,200. So, if we project that to just stay flat at its current levels, it might be 6,700 this year. And they did not get additional funding for a driver to keep up with that demand. So, they will do their best to keep with current resources to continue offering that service.
Could I ask a question right now? My understanding is, you know, while you didn't get your request, part of the funding that's being provided here will help augment?
It could do, yes.
It could or it will?
Do you intend to make it available for that if that is an identified solution to the crunch on resources for transportation? Yes, not just for a study, but to actually pay hours for drivers if needed.
And as far as what we believe the cost for the study and what the residual would be available of the $60,000 for drivers would be how much? So, $20,000, $15,000?
So, study is a word that might suggest, like, hiring a consultant or anything like that. That's not the intention of the Commission on Disabilities at this time. There is a survey draft, and that I understand it so far, the intention is just to pay for the mailing costs so that we could get that survey to the hands of residents. It would not be a significant portion of the total $60,000.
So, the significant portion of the $60,000 would be available for augmenting rides for the seniors?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I didn't want to misrepresent what I told someone. That's what I told her, which was good. Thank you. Bye.
Sally?
Um, sure, through you, to Lily, and all those, uh, 4199 rides in 2022, I'm going to assume that they weren't all rides to a doctor's office, that some of them might have been to Walgreens, some of them might have been to someplace else. Can you indicate, or do you have any idea, how many of them were doctor's appointments and how many were other?
I don't have those statistics handy, but I know the vast majority are non-medical. This is the senior center vans, which are restricted to in-town.
Right, so primarily non-medical?
Yes.
And is, is your, do you anticipate using whatever remains of the $60,000 for your warrant article number 33 for strictly medical?
I would defer to the Transportation Committee to make choices based on the grant funding we receive as well, to what is possible with the money. But I, I think that the medical rides are the first priority, and I'm looking for nods.
Then you have a really good, the vans are being used primarily for, uh... Going for a Mai Tai, or whatever, I mean, I, I don't know.
I know.
They're not medical business, and I think that that's an important, important thing to distinguish, particularly when there's $60,000 in this warrant article. There's another potential $50,000 that's supposed, that's earmarked by the state. That's a lot of money, uh, to be quite honest. And it's not clear to me that the need for transportation to doctors is the, is the primary need in this community and that, and, and that sort of begs the question, what is our responsibility to provide?
Okay, I can give more specific data about medical appointments. The next slide is specific to medical appointments.
Yeah, I think we'll continue on.
Okay. The MVRTA, as they were called when we first began working with them in 2017, has offered the Ring and Ride. That service will be ending June 30th. And they have several dozen seniors who are using it regularly. They also accept disabled veterans, but the population has been restricted. That service has been available, essentially, it's one van assigned to North Reading every day, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, serving exclusively medical rides. I have detailed data for three months in 2022, which might appear in the next slide. And the total rides for 2022 was about 400. But we were seeing quarter over quarter, an increase. Over 200 rides were in the very last quarter of 2022, which, if we look at the annual projection again, had they continued the Ring and Ride, it might look like 870 rides in a, in a year. Based on the detailed data we were able to get for a nine-month period, about one-third of the rides that they had been doing in the past may still be eligible for the MEVA MediRide or MediMEVA, which they're offering in July. Two-thirds of those rides that they had provided in the past year in that nine-month period would no longer be eligible. And that estimate is over 500 rides that would no longer be provided next year under the new program. So, that's the very specific group of rides that I, I think is the highest priority to make sure that those seniors and disabled veterans need to get to their medical appointments. And the Transportation Committee is looking at multiple options to see if they're eligible for anything else. Starting a volunteer program to try and match them with the lowest-cost option to get where they need to go, but looking for additional pilot funding so that if seniors are left stranded without a way to get to the medical appointment or a way to get home, the committee and the town will have some options to support them. This is the non-financial things that have already happened to support these riders. The Select Board created a Transportation Committee last fall. Volunteers who are interested in driving their neighbors, even if it's only once a month that you think you could take someone to a medical appointment, you're welcome to attend an orientation at the Senior Center this Thursday at 2:00 p.m. where you'll meet with other volunteers. Today, actually, two volunteers who've gone through the Cory process have started calling Ring and Ride recipients who are going to be losing some level of service, and they're screening them for additional types of rides they might be eligible for through their insurance and talking to them about specific needs that they might need accommodated if volunteers are serving them. The committee is also committed to information sharing. So, in the transcript last week, there was information about a few opportunities that already exist, the MiniMEVA and Trip Metro North, as well as the volunteer opportunity. And this week, you'll see information, hopefully in the transcript, about ride-sharing apps and health-related rides that might be available through your insurance or medical provider. There's a brochure created with the Transportation Committee currently on the Senior Center website and their website. And like I said, volunteers are reaching out to the specifically impacted seniors to talk about options. Next slide, so, why spend money on this issue? Part one, a town-wide assessment will help us understand the needs of residents who identify as disabled and those whose transportation is limited. The most recent data we have that really talked about destinations is from 2017, 2016. So, getting more current data about where people need to go would be helpful. And also- So getting more current data about where people need to go would be helpful, and also what their specific needs are. So even today, we found with our first two riders that they may not be able to use an app on their phone. One family had two people with walkers who both need to be able to use a vehicle. So understanding those needs might help us target the types of transportation solutions that will work for them. However, that's a very inexpensive expected cost to get that information. The large part would be getting rides for people, and some potential expenses that the Transportation Committee might recommend would be software to assign volunteer rides so that we don't have to call volunteers in sequence and do voicemails. We could automatically notify and get a response. We also may need to subsidize Uber or Lyft rides. Generally, a ride into a Boston hospital might cost $40 plus. With Uber or Lyft, the folks who've been using the Ring and Ride were paying up to $10 round trip in the past for that service. I don't think anyone has said it must always be free, but for some people, the cost of Uber and Lyft is out of reach. And funding additional senior center drivers may help with some of the medical transportation that we're no longer doing. And there are also contract vendors that we might consider, although the trip per cost might be between $250 and $350, to use a contract wheelchair-accessible van for a single trip versus the senior center van. We may find that the senior center is a less expensive route to get those trips done for people who are in a wheelchair. And finally, folks who aren't comfortable using apps might prefer a call center with some type of coordinator who can assist them in matching rides, especially in the transition period, until they all find their best options and get familiar with those new options they're using.
So question first. So anyone over the age of 60 is eligible? Is that, what's the?
So for the MEVA Ring and Ride, it's age 60-plus or a disabled veteran.
What about for, in general, like for what's provided, not the MEVA, the other, like just the in-town?
The senior center van is also restricted to age 60, although they do some additional services for younger residents.
And then, under the assist portion, I mean, I know the state has things, but is there, I'm assuming there's no income qualification in general, correct? Like?
So currently, the senior center van and the Ring and Ride are both free.
Okay.
In a long-term plan for transportation, once the options are identified, a co-pay is a possibility?
I, I only say, and again, maybe just because I deal with a lot of clients that have a lot of money, and you know, you would think that they've never made a dollar in their life when it comes to spending. But the subsidize, it's just something where, again, I'm not, I think this is a great program, but I feel that because it's costly, or can become costly, I think the, especially anything subsidized, should go to people that actually need it, not people that just, you know, not on a fixed income, and there's a lot of wealthy people in this town over the age of 60, you know, common, you know, the belief that everybody over the age of 60 is broke in North Reading, we'll just throw that out. And that's my thing, that it just, on the subsidy thing, that's the only thing I would say, that maybe if somebody's going to get a co-pay that they really need, it's not just that no one's checking, so it's like, why not? So just, again, because coming in and out of Boston can be a pain, especially is anybody that's done it, because I do it, or anyone. So that's the only thing I would say, but everything else is great, just that as soon as you start doing subsidize, it's just, you know, you only need one time for, God forbid, it's like, how did somebody who has a Mercedes in the driveway just pay $10 to get to Boston Medical Center, and then it becomes a thing? And I, and you know that with Facebook, it will get fished out, and that's my only thing. I'd rather just say it upfront. I know it's not maybe the most popular, but that would be my only thing with the, if we start subsidizing, if there's a way to just make sure whoever we're subsidizing actually does need it, just, we're not just doing it because no one's asking the question.
I appreciate that. I can ensure that the additional members who aren't here also hear that when the Transportation Committee is designing pilots.
Thank you.
Ms. Lynn Bell?
I just have a question on the medical transports, and you said MediMEVA and other vendor wheelchairs. Are those, you know, setting aside this pilot, are the costs for those medical transports, do those vendors get the money back from the individual's insurance? Do they get a portion of the sum back because it's a medical?
Some insurance providers do cover the cost of transportation, and others don't. Mass Health has a program called PT1, and that is folks who are lower income qualify for Mass Health generally, and it requires an additional eligibility process, so not everyone on Mass Health gets it automatically. But Mass Health will then pay for rides for those people. I believe the VA has a criteria that they'll work through with veterans who need to get to those hospitals and potentially subsidize or offer transportation. I'm not yet expert at that, but we do have their phone number for individuals to call and learn about eligibility. Many insurances do not. My Blue Cross, I think I couldn't necessarily get a free ride to the doctor. But we do encourage, and the brochure mentions, talk to your healthcare provider, talk to your insurance, talk to your hospital, because there may be options based on your specific combination of circumstances that they know about for you, that are beyond sort of the public transportation or generally available information that we have.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, just, obviously, the bulk of the $60,000 is geared towards transportation, not studies. And that's good. And again, that's certainly going to get us a lot of answers, questions we have as to what the needs are in the community, and identify those segments of the community that need to be assisted. So I think this is a great start. I'm glad that the money's available for supplementing the transportation for these people, even though we didn't fund the hard-time background.
There is one question from the.
Okay.
It's Ms. Christina Gendol.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to raise a question regarding the allocation of $60,000 for a needs assessment that's specifically for senior services and the Elder Services Department, because undoubtedly this is unnecessary and should have been important for supporting our seniors, but it raises a concern about the equitable distribution of resources across other departments. So I recall, Lillian, that you brought up last Monday, the Youth Services Committee meeting the pressing need for a similar assessment for the Youth Services Department, which, as you know, has been completely shuttered. So in light of this, it's perplexing to see resources allocated only to senior services, while the needs of not only our youth remain unaddressed, because in addition, it also brings to question the approach toward the needs assessments for other public service departments. And are there plans in place to conduct needs assessments across all departments, or is this a one-off decision for senior services? And so my questions tonight are, why has the needs assessment been specifically allocated for the senior services department, leaving other departments, including Youth Services, overlooked? And moreover, what is the plan for conducting these assessments across other public service departments to ensure that every demographic in our community is being geared to adequately?
Madam Chair, through you, that's a great question, and I think the simplest answer is that this program is being requested, this pilot is being requested, because an existing service that we were depending on, that sort of faded into the background during the pandemic and then kind of very quickly became heavily dependent upon during the course of last fiscal year, is going away. And, you know, prior to the question, it's a great question, but prior to the question, I actually was going to offer, you know, my own comment, that it could be that we get to the end of this and we realize that everybody who kind of had a need found another solution that didn't involve the town in North Reading. I think we need to be open to that as a possibility. I think that the reason I'm here recommending it, and that I think it should be considered, is because we don't know what that solution is. I know that there are questions about whether it's our obligation or not to determine what that solution is, but the fact is, we don't know what the solution will be for the potentially hundreds of trips for transportation, particularly medical transportation, for which the service that's there now won't be available. So the reason, I can speak for myself, the reason this was prioritized at this time is because we had an existing program that was coming to an end, or it is coming to an end, and looking to succeed that with something.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll add to that. Just to be clear, the, the survey that's being done is not just for transportation, it's being done for three major demographics. It's for preschool kids, zero to three, zero to five, excuse me, kids in school, and then adults after high school. And so there's three demographics, and the goal is to focus on people who are either delayed or disabled and are challenged to meet their daily living. Because what we figured out is that if you, if you identify those issues, which we believe is about 20%, 20% of the households have those issues, when you identify those issues, what's good for them is going to be good for the entire town. So we're really focusing on that age group across the board, and that'll expand into other areas that affects the entire town. So the, the survey, which is going to be less than $10,000, because we're doing it ourselves, and it's really just for mailing and printing, is really going to hit a wide swath beyond just transportation. So that could address bigger needs than what we're normally used to doing.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Lynn Bell?
Well, I think that needs to be really fleshed out, because I think there's already transportation services for, at least youth, that I understand, that, that already covers most of what you just said. So my understanding of this was a pilot related to the loss of service. However, we still aren't clear, as we sit here today, specifically how many of these rides are medical rides. We still don't have that data. In, in providing those rides this whole time, we should have, at least the senior center rides, we know. Certainly, they know to and from where they're going, so we should have some sense of what type of rides they're providing. And we're, we're saying there's an unmet need based on some figures, which I still don't understand where those came from. Where do we get that data from? And it doesn't seem like, in the grand scheme of things, that's a significant portion of the population that we've discussed that's reliant upon these rides, and what for, we still don't know that. But I'm concerned about the, the question suggesting that we're not meeting youth transportation needs. I don't understand what, why we're not meeting, because that's wholly funded separately, and, and also, I didn't, I wasn't aware that there was a deficiency in that either. But that, that youth, youth transportation, at least the busing and the, you know, the those types of issues, we should, that shouldn't even be, that, how is that factored in here? I recall when we had the position consideration, it was going to be a shared position between the senior center and the school, and I was absolutely not in favor of that, because that just showed me there's no deficiency or no real need to cover this by suggesting it had to be a shared driver, shared service with the school, because the school already, we fund acquisition of vehicles, buses, we fund, you know, things like that through the school, et cetera, so. And if there's a, a need, a financial need at the school, again, there are, there are already programs in place to cover students who may have a financial need that, you know, they're unable to pay for. So I don't understand the blending of this with this ask, or I'm still not clear, what $10,000, where is that going? Who's me, who's doing the mailing? And what are we studying? What exactly are we studying here? We either have a need or we don't. And if it's.
You'd have to see the surveys, because again, it's a three demographics. So in this survey, it's going to be the three demographics, and it's not just about transportation, it's about accessibility, it's about things that they're being impacted by. So you have that zero to five group, which is not part of the schools, and you have the post-high school, which is not part of the schools. And you have a lot of vets, and you have a lot of people in that group that need services that we don't even know about. And so it's, it's really looking at the three demographics, recognizing that the schools are taking care of obviously the large majority of the youth's needs. But there's other issues inside there about, you know, KidsBot, it's about, you know, playgrounds, it's about services they're getting in or out of town, and what are they using for services, and how are they, how are they getting around? So it's, if you saw the surveys, it'd become clear, because again, it's a combination of the Commission on Disability and the Transportation Committee that are putting this together. Transportation is one of the fundamental issues that are.
The biggest need I see is, is the problem, the biggest problem is the MEVA is dropping us. And there was a, quite, I mean, what was the number? How many rides? Did MEVA accommodate?
I think last year it was 404, but that more than 200 of them were in the last quarter.
Yeah. Because there was COVID, and yeah, so that number's going to drop now that people are out and, you know, doing things again. So that's a large number of people that relied on that transportation that they're not going to have anymore. So.
It doesn't even tell you, though, how many people. It just tells you 404 rides. Was that 10 people? Was that 100 people? Was that 404 people? We don't even know that data. I'm not necessarily saying, and I know you've done a lot of study on this, Lillian, I appreciate it, but it's kind of, and I am concerned about the caller saying where, where there's an issue with the, with the transportation for youth, because that, that's something totally not what this was really.
That's really the primary thing at this point. The fact is, we've dropped, we're dropping, you know, the services are not going to be there that they were before, and we're in a position of redefining how we're going to provide services down the road. So this is like, kind of like this kind of startup capital, if you will, while we figure it out. And the Transportation Committee, which is new, is going to be doing surveys of other towns to try to figure out what might best work here. But we've been a hodgepodge of different services, and Lil and her group is trying to pull together what's going to work in our town, like other towns have done. You know, what has worked in Lexington, what has worked in Concord, what can work here? And that's just, you have to survey, you have to spend some time doing it, but you also need experience, but we're, we don't have MEVA after July 1st. We have to do something to fill in it. She may not even spend the full $60,000.
Right. And let's say so, in this town, we don't have bus service, we don't have a train, we don't, I mean, people who don't drive, they're really stranded. They, they rely on these transportation, they rely on it. So even if it's a small portion of people, they matter and they need it.
Yeah, no one's saying that. We just don't know how many people it even is.
What if it's five? I mean, they still need it. It's still necessary.
If it's five, why are we spending $10,000 to study?
Well, it's not five, but.
So you're saying, what if it's five? So.
But it's not.
We don't know what it is.
Do we know what it is, Lillian?
We do have data. I received new data today from MEVA covering the October through May period. I, I don't remember very accurately, but I would, I would say broadly, it's between 30 and 50 regular users of the MEVA Ring and Ride currently. And I, I could provide details in the report. And I, I could provide details in any report.
Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Let's just pick 404 rides. I don't care.
Yeah.
Those are events as opposed to round trip per person to a doctor, as I understand it. Okay? So those are, those are not round trips. Those are one direction for maybe one person. So it's not really 400 people are grabbing at this opportunity or have this need. We don't know what that need is. We also don't know where these rides are going. They're not all necessarily medical.
Which is where the survey comes in.
Those are all medical rides.
Those are?
Yes.
So basically what you're saying here is that there are approximately 200 round trip events in 2022 that were medical with MIVA, is that correct?
Yes.
Just MIVA.
Say what?
With just MIVA. There's other ways they can get to medical.
Yeah, fine.
Just MIVA.
Yeah. That's the number we have up here.
Yeah.
And it's going away.
So, I mean, studies, things, we're like a think tank in North Reading. Studying, surveying everything.
Well, we've never, we've, we've never had this Transportation Committee and we've never had this issue, MIVA is dropping us. So that's what's created this problem. Can we say?
I'm Diane Norris. I'm one of the people on the Transportation Committee. I, I appreciate how frustrating this is. Some of the data is from the pandemic. We certainly didn't have the kind of transportation now. But what we're looking at in North Reading is about 30% of the people are 60 or older. So this is not a situation that we've lived with before. And we're going to be having many people who just don't drive. And if you don't drive, you probably won't be living in North Reading. And I think that's one of the focuses of this committee. What's important for us to fund? You know, are there medical needs? I can tell you that some of the programs that are funded, they do go to bars and hospice sites, but they're very restricted. They only go on three days a week, and they only go between 10 and 3. So if your therapy or appointment or whatever lapses, you're on your own to find your way home. So it's not exactly the easiest system to use. But I think the value of the assessment is to find out what people do need. We can all bring our own personal experience and I say, I drive, I don't need anything. But that's not really reflected with the community, and that's what we want with the assessment. And as you said, the rest of the money will go to kind of fill in what we've lost, that we haven't been able to.
Thank you.
I have two questions on.
Mr. Gilbert?
Nick Merlocka.
My question this evening. Did everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, part of the program is to apply for a matching grant. I think that's correct. If the probability is high to receive that matching grant, we're talking $120,000 to the program. I guess the, the main question is if that grant's approved, is all the money going to be earmarked towards this program and is there a good place or way to use it? Thank you.
That's a great question, Mr. Merlocka. Just to kind of clarify that, yes, we are hoping to be the beneficiary of a $50,000 earmark in the state fiscal year 2024 operating budget secured by Representative Jones, hopefully able to be advocated for by Senator Tarr. The thinking is not to use both funding sources, at least that's not my thinking, but we won't know a final answer on whether that money is available to us until well into the month of July and all like the event. Because it needs to be approved at the Senate level. It needs to be approved in a conference committee report, which likely won't be till the very end of June, if history prevails. And then it needs to survive, you know, the governor's approval or a veto, and then the veto being overridden. All those things have to break our way. That won't all be resolved until probably the end of July or beginning of August. In the meantime, the program expires June 30th. Um, we need to have the funding in place. But the intention is not to spend both funding sources. Um, you know, the hope is we can rely entirely and only on that $50,000, but it won't be available, uh, for us to, at the start, it won't be immediately available to us. So that's why we're, we're pursuing this dual path.
The first one.
I see a question.
Okay. Um, uh, three years to the town administrator, $50,000 earmark is not a matching grant. Is that, is that true?
That's correct. I don't believe it's a ten-year match. Yeah. And I'm not sure, do you, I think, was there a question over here or comment? Ma'am?
Um, I'm Mike Griffin. I'm on the Transportation Committee and the Commission on Disability, so I'm working with both of these. Um, so to clarify with the survey, I know it seems confusing because we have a lot going on. There's a lot of irons and fire. And what we're trying to do is reach out to, um, the population of North Reading, which is kind of most affected, are, are disabled veterans and our elderly. Um, because there is an immediate need, and what we were finding was that people actually, we have people denied for medical rights, um, and because our program is going away. So that's why, I know it sounds confusing with our survey, we're trying to understand what the needs of our community are and not be assuming that we know and actually hear from the people what they want. And I have a copy of specific what the transportation ones, which are paternity. Everything is still, um, moving forward. You know, we're tweaking it each time we're meeting, um, but the transportation, what we're done with is the immediate need, especially with the medical rides. Um, but we, we found unfortunately, North Reading is falling on a loophole where we're not part of MBTA and then the MIVA wanted ZMIA, so that's why, like, we're in this kind of critical crunch time to get things done. Um, Lil and I got volunteer services that started to, again, try to deal with that immediate need and luckily, our, having people come forward, which isn't costing the town any money, so we're definitely trying to be creative with options here to help, um, the people in community with the most needs. And unfortunately, with the two van drivers and them only staying in town, we are seeing that, from what we've seen in this, in the survey in the past, is most people are trying to go to medical services outside of the town. And which isn't, our unfortunate vans don't meet those needs for people.
Can I just quickly? Thank you for that. Because I, I do remember when this was presented, I thought originally it was, it had to do with the Ring and Ride ending. And the Ring and Ride primarily was servicing a segment of our veterans here, and, and it was all veterans, right? That the Ring and Ride was helping to get them, get veterans back and forth to their treatment. That's what I thought.
I have the old brochure, which is out of date. Um, the eligibility for this were age 60-plus or a disabled veteran. And it's referred people to the Veteran Service Office, I believe, to access the services.
Okay. Yes, okay.
Madam Chair, to you, there's another question virtually. Christina Gendolfo?
Um, yeah, um, as I understand it, in public services, uh, the town kind of has an objective article stating that we're trying our best not to operate various public service departments and silos. So, you know, wondering if that services, um, does have a say in the needs assessment and how it might cater to their stakeholders. But 30% of the town's population is age 18 and under, so, um, and I did, I did know that youth do need transportation, uh, for after-school activities, um, which isn't provided by the school, whether that's for, you know, transportation, um, to, you know, youth services or otherwise. I'm just wondering how it is that we're covering a much more comprehensive survey that covers, um, needs above and beyond just transportation, right? For three separate age demographics, for under $10,000. But the request here for elder services alone is $60,000, just for the assessment alone, uh, for transportation needs alone. That may indeed be grant matched or given a $50,000 subsidy. Would that be able to be earmarked for the needs assessments for other departments, especially ones most in need of survey or a needs assessment? But my main question here is how we can take care of, um, three demographics and do a more comprehensive survey for under 10 grand, but we're potentially, um, you know, getting 110,000, uh, for elder services, but 60,000 for the needs assessment?
Madam Chair, to you.
Yes, please.
So the article is funding for a pilot program and a needs assessment, primarily pilot program, direct services, a smaller proportion thereof for needs assessment, um, related to the ending of the, the, um, MBRTA transportation program in place. Um, I think it's a great question with regard to whether there might be other transportation needs. I would defer the Transportation Committee to sort of provide us that feedback, um, as we're moving forward. With regard to the funding, um, I, I have no expectation that it is matching funding. Um, it's a, I, I, an area of requests that we received, uh, an article asking for funding. I submitted it along with probably 15 other items to Representative Jones that were requested for funding that may or may not fit the bill. We're hopeful that, that it will be funded. Uh, I don't believe there's an expectation of a match. I do think we're going to have to use some of our own money to get this off the ground before we have a final answer on that state funding. But, um, I think in terms of the policy issue being brought up by, we need to defer to the committee that we set up to come back to us with that recommendation. So I'm sure that we'll have more to come on that. And if there's a need for a particular funding that we haven't captured here, we have an October town meeting where we could certainly, um, submit that funding request.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other questions or comment?
Madam Chair, to you, not to jump the gun, but I believe we're awaiting a recommendation. I don't know whether the board is prepared to offer that recommendation. It certainly has the ability to do so the evening of town meeting. Um, we've, you know, I'd just point that out.
Move to recommend.
Does that say next? I, yes, I have a move to recommend.
Need a second, Richard.
Second.
I have a second. Mr. O'Leary?
There is a, there is a motion.
Oh, there is a motion. Thank you.
Yeah, there is a motion. So are we in the recommend? Yes. Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 13 fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds for disability needs assessment in transportation pilot.
Second.
I have the motion by Mr. Walner, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Sudo?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Are we going to deliberate any further?
I was supposed to say, is there any further discussion?
Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry. The hour is late. Aye. Aye.
She said aye.
Aye. And I have an aye, so we have any elements recommend.
Madam Chair, moving right along.
Moving right along.
Article 34. Increasing the revolving fund limit for elder services is as submitted to us by the Council on Aging and the Department of Elder Services, if we allow us to increase the cap on annual expenditures from the current $12,000 to ambitious $50,000 in anticipation of increased programming. As we stated at the last discussion, this is not taxpayer money. This is revenue from programs, um, paid into an account that is then made available for a specific purpose coming out of the account. And the board, um, I believe, it says recommendation we made at town meeting, but I recall a favorable vote on the part of the select board.
We did recommend.
So I don't believe a further vote is needed. And I want to recognize Mr. Greenberg from the Council on Aging, who is present here this evening. I know the Council on Aging has done a lot of work on this, as he's watching us virtually here, so thank you, Dan. Article 35, I just pasted the language in here. This was a citizen's petition that came in, um, relative to COVID-19, um, masking, um, vaccinations and requirements related there too. Not going to go too far into the subject matter area, except to read what I printed in the description with the warrant. The petition includes a broad policy statement concerning health and medical-related issues and proposes policies for public buildings, including schools. Town council has advised that approval of this article at most would be advisory in nature, as the authority over the subject matter lies exclusively with the Board of Health and/or the School Committee. And I know that the moderator has had some conversation with the petitioner and will continue to have conversations regarding to that. As I understand it, they made a request for a presentation or leave of the meeting with regard to this, and the moderator is preparing for that with town council. I do expect that a number of us from the COVID-19 working group will also seek to at least briefly address town meeting with regard to, you know, what took place, um, during and after the onset of the pandemic. And the board has previously, uh, voted not to recommend that. And that is the conclusion of.
Other proponents?
I should, I should note, I did talk with the chair on Friday, and we sent an email to the lead petitioner. Um, I, and when I checked my emails, it was on this afternoon, I'd not heard back from the petitioner, but I, I don't see them in the audience, and I don't see anybody on here. The lead petitioner being, uh, Mr. John Barrett. And there were nine, at least nine other signatures on the petition, names I don't recall. I must say, if I saw them in the audience.
Okay. All right.
I mean, it had me as the first paragraph, but then it lost me with the, with the rest. So.
Nine assignments each.
I just think it's important for people to understand, the public to understand that this particular article is calling for, um, town departments, agencies, public school systems to basically disregard.
Mr. O'Leary is trying to speak, and we have public, excuse me. You could just keep the conversation down. Mr. O'Leary is trying to.
So anyway, I think it's important for the public to understand that this article is, you know, while it's not binding, um, this is important. It's important to come down and voice your opinion on and exercise your right to advise. But basically, it's, it's directing, um, town government to ignore the science, ignore the public health issues, um, not require certain, um, actions on the part of, of the town as an employer, as a protector of public health, to take into consideration, um, federal and state and national, international, uh, advice from scientists and health officials. I think it's important that people come to town meeting anyway, you know, because we have an $87 million budget and a few other matters to discuss. But in addition to that, this particular article provides the community an opportunity to speak in relation to how do we want our local officials here, both elected and appointed, and those that we hire to advise us, uh, to act in certain situations when it comes to public health issues. So now is the time to not sit on the sidelines, but to come down and voice your opinion and have it be heard. So, um, I fully recognize and accept and embrace, um, these proponents of this article to come forward with this proposal of sorts. Um, and while I may not agree with it, I think it's important for the community as a whole to come out and let everybody know what they expect of their elected, appointed, if they're appointed officials, uh, in a public health crisis. And, uh, sitting by on the sidelines and remaining silent should not be an option. We just went through, uh, you know, three years of a very trying, um, set of circumstances worldwide, and what's being proposed here appears to some of us, I guess, to fly in the face of some common sense and reliance on the people that our taxes pay to study and will go for our interests as a community, as a society, as a whole. And either we want to rely on them or we don't. We want to rely on a vocal minority of people. But you got to express your opinion. That's it. Or yes or no?
And I would like to.
And I would like to be double-ta, advocate on the other side of that, that a lot of that science was wrong and a lot of civil liberties were taken away from people. And so I would say, you know, although our town didn't do a lot of the things others did, that doesn't mean that it wouldn't be in the future. So I support this, and I think it's a, I think, I'd say kudos, you know, to bring it forward and to make sure that never happens again. There was science that was wrong. So, you know, there were children who were masked that had disabilities, that it was more harmful to them to be masked than not to be. There were a lot of situations that, you know, people who lost their jobs because they chose not to take the vaccination, that they thought might be harmful to them. So, you know, I, I say it's great, I agree with you, bring it forward and voice your opinion, and that's what makes America great. We can all discuss the things that we want to, freely. So, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a lot to say, but I'll probably wait until the Town Meeting.
Okay.
Share a few comments, because I think this needs to get people engaged a little bit. People don't realize that this is even on the warrant. And I think it's important now, couple, three weeks ahead of time, to let people know that this is on the warrant, this is something that, you know, is, is gonna be a reflection on this community as a whole.
Right.
And I think we need to express our opinion.
I'll just say, I'll just say a few things then, you know. But like, as I, as I said, the first paragraph, you know, wholeheartedly philosophically, I agree with. I'm not sure what it's doing on an article at the Town Meeting in terms of the governance of our town, but, you know, we, we don't, I wholeheartedly agree with that. However, the other provisions of this, to me, again, I don't know what it's doing on the Town Meeting floor. I don't even know why it's there. We can, you know, wax philosophical and, you know, Monday morning quarterback, but I'm pretty sure that masks to prevent the transmission of germs and other things have been a part of the medical profession for, for probably centuries at this point. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but, so I'm sure there's medical literature to show the efficacy of wearing masks, but the, for the example you just said, the law did not require, like you use the example of disabled, a disabled child, they couldn't wear a mask, it was forced to wear a mask, the, at least in Massachusetts, that, that wasn't the law, and there were exemptions and exceptions, including, you know, individuals, you know, there were exemptions involving individuals, you know, for medical reasons or other reasons. So that's how the law was written.
It didn't work so well, though.
Yes, but none of this was, none of these were mandates here in North Reading.
Not in North Reading.
So if you wanna, you wanna talk about it and analyze it and everything, that's fine, but it's Article thirty-five as a citizen's petition. And I agree with Mr. O'Leary, democracy at its best, but let's be accurate about what happened here in North Reading and why are we talking about it in June of two thousand and twenty-three, when most of that was, is not applicable to what transpired here? That's, those are my few comments.
I, I would just ask a question. Even if it's approved, it has no, it has no teeth, and my understanding is it, there's no way you can implement this. Is that correct? Is that what I've learned?
That is my understanding, yes.
Can we just say that at Town Meeting, so people just know that even if they approve it, doesn't mean anything, because it doesn't?
It says it.
Yeah, it says it on.
Under the infraction.
Yeah.
Then let's just point that out.
But it does say something. It says something about the community, it says something about where our head is at, and, you know, where, what role public health officials are going to play, what role we play as an employer to protect our employees, to protect the public who interacts with our employees, and, you know, what, what can or can or shouldn't we, should or shouldn't we do?
But even if we do, it has no.
Again, I agree, but.
It has no teeth.
I know it has no teeth.
It's a UBC.
But it makes us, but it's, to me, I think it's important for people to come in and be heard, you know. And again, I could, I could make an amendment to this thing on Town Meeting floor and turn it, edit those other three or four paragraphs upside down and just say, you know, in that with the Town of North Reading shall and should refer to the most reasonable expectations and scientific evidence as available, you know. Are you in favor or opposed to that? No, you should ignore it, right? This is saying ignore it, you know. Turn it around and say, should they, you know, consult with the CDC? Should they consult with the Mass Department of Public Health? Should they listen to whom? Should they see what's going on in the world? Should, you know, they be taking some action? And should we be using the best possible advice that's available? This is saying something totally contrary.
Yeah.
To that. You know, so people need to be aware that it's available for, for us to weigh in on. Come down and weigh in.
Again, I love paragraph one, but the Supreme Court just overrode that in a recent, a recent decision.
Right.
When a person's decisions about privacy, health, and medical care, so.
Just threw that one.
I'm, I'm all for that, however.
And even these people.
The High Court of the Land isn't all for that. They've just overturned that to a very significant degree.
As I said, if I were gonna offer an amendment, I might leave that first.
Keep paragraph one until.
I keep paragraph one and then the rest.
Two, three, four.
I think we've deviated.
Two, three, four.
Do you think we've deviated just a bit?
No, and I think it's a, no, and I, no.
No, no, but I mean, now we're getting into like, I mean, like, I mean, I.
Well, that's what this is about.
I love to, like, host a social studies class at eleven fifteen, but.
Right.
Well, again, the proponents aren't even here to offer their explanation on this.
But they're winning right now, because we're giving them airtime. They're winning.
But they're not, they're not here to even offer why they're here, why they're doing.
And it tells us everything we need to know of how much they support their own statement, right?
That's true.
All right, well, it went for, it was not recommended, correct?
Correct. Yeah, but it's not what? I'm sorry.
It's not recommended by the Select Board.
Yeah, it's not enforceable or.
Correct.
It's not a binding thing.
Understood.
It's dead on arrival.
So are we ready to move on to number one?
Yep.
To integrate a contract of D P W?
Didn't we cut this deal like six months ago?
Easter Local Twenty-Five, or to ratify and sign?
Oh, no, this is the integr, okay.
Madam Chair, through you, this is a routine article to incorporate a previously approved memorandum agreement into an existing collective bargaining agreement. It does not afford any new wage adjustments or benefits, simply consolidating a word.
Please pick the. Motion, okay. Okay, Madam Chair, I move to ratify and sign the integrated contract between the Town of North Reading and North Reading D P W Union Local Twenty-Five from July two thousand and twenty-one through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Walner and a second by Mrs. Mayne Kelly. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Mayne Kelly?
Aye.
And myself is aye.
Okay. Public comment?
Public comment. Anybody here for public comment?
You deserve to talk. Get up and talk about like your day. I mean, you stayed until eleven fifteen. You say, like, tell us about traffic. I just, it's right. I hear it up and say something.
Shits up later.
Public comment accepted.
Oh, my goodness.
I think that means it's last call.
All right.
Anybody on?
Board meetings.
No, nobody's there? Okay. So upcoming board meeting dates. Did we already do it?
I don't think so. We started to, but we got stuck somewhere.
We're going to need on the twelfth.
Oh, yeah, because you weren't here.
So we're talking about the fifth, but the fifth was off the table.
Fifth's off the table?
Yes. I have down the twelfth.
Right, the twelfth is Town Meeting, though.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you better have the twelfth. So are we meeting before Town Meeting, or this is it?
Madam Chair, through you, I just was running the office, got a printout, drafted a schedule, which I tried to work to put together based upon the Select Board's policy of the first and third Monday meetings. And again, some of us heard from the School Committee saying, hey, can we try to not schedule any conflicting dates? I have not reviewed their summer schedule, but I have some dates to run by the Board. First is, we have a June twelfth Spring Annual Town Meeting scheduled. We already previously had some discussion about whether or not Monday, June fifth would work, and I believe it does not work for multiple board members. I, I think from a conduct of business standpoint, if we are okay with having the regular board meeting on June twentieth, twenty-first, or twenty-second, not being able to do so on the nineteenth due to the state and federal holiday of Juneteenth, we probably are okay to just meet the evening of Town Meeting and conduct the Town Meeting-related business.
I can do the twenty-first.
So that's all Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I guess we could look at a Friday as well, if the Board wanted to.
Figure it easy, Friday.
Thursday's bad, but Tuesday, Wednesday.
I can do that Tuesday or Wednesday.
I can do, the Tuesday is better for me than the Wednesday.
I don't care. She's flying home from Framingham one way or the other.
Any of those dates?
I won't, I don't have Tuesdays.
Any of those dates, uh, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty?
I won't have, I don't have the twentieth. Probably the, did you say the twenty-second?
Can't do, I can't do the twenty-second.
The twenty-first?
Can do the twenty-first.
Can you do the twenty-first? I don't know what that date is.
I'm gonna let some town, might say, since it's a different one.
What time do you get back? Usually.
Depends on the traffic. But, I mean, I could.
Depends on how many lights she hits.
I could make it work if that's what's gonna work for everybody else.
Maybe Vincenzo can always start the meeting, too.
Yeah, I can do, I can do the twenty-first.
Mrs. Kelly, can you?
I'm gonna put it in, yeah.
We could look to start a bit later, then seven, seven-thirty would be better. We could do that.
What? We'll do seven, I'll just make it work. I'll, I'll just, less people getting in.
So much for your first and third Monday.
Well, we knew that that would be an issue. So.
Okay, twenty-first?
After Wednesday, June twenty-first, looking ahead, I took a little bit of a liberty in not proposing Monday, July third for a meeting, and instead keeping with Monday, July seventeenth as a regular meeting date. That puts us at about four weeks between meetings. We run into an issue, we certainly couldn't schedule a meeting sooner, but.
What day are you looking at?
Seventeenth.
Monday, July seventeenth.
Can't do the tenth?
We could do the tenth. I will tell you that the meeting packet probably won't be the highest quality, because I won't be here the week before to put it together, so just be cognizant of that, and I don't have anything specific that will come up for that meeting, but we certainly could do that if that's what.
I won't be here on the tenth.
Okay, well, that answered that.
So the seventeenth?
I hope you're doing that pencil there, Richard.
Now.
I should've.
This, if we had to add meetings related to continuing, like, sort of discussion, we can just do it at?
I do it between, between meetings or at, at meetings. They would all need to be, you know, obviously publicized on the calendar once, once they're posted.
When is that gonna start cooking, you know, start becoming active again?
My expectation is probably at that meeting on the twenty-first of June. We'd have some more substantial conversation.
Wait, you said the twenty-first of?
June twenty-first.
Oh, okay. Oh, so we'll start there, okay. Yeah.
I would say resume.
Okay, yeah.
The discussions, is my guess.
And then, so after the twenty-first, we are on the seventeenth, and then?
I put, put out there the July, August seventh and twenty-first. Those are first and third Mondays.
You guys, I'm here on the seventh, not the twenty-first.
The, I'll just flag the twenty-first as that is the day that warrant articles are due for October Town Meeting. You don't necessarily need to meet that night, but that is the date that they do. So we would have at least.
From others.
From others, yeah.
From others.
We'd have the routine articles then, whenever they've been submitted.
Oh, the time zone problem.
The seventh is bad for me.
I can do the seventh. I can't do the twenty-first.
Okay.
Only I, I could, but I can't promise I.
All right, I might possibly not be able to make the seventh.
So what did you say, Madam Chair?
The seventh, I don't think I can make, but Mr. Studo could. I might be able, you know what, I could probably come along soon.
Okay.
Is it?
The twenty-first, is that?
Can I chair from Zoom, or would I, would Mr. Studo need to chair?
I believe that you can chair under the current provisions of the law. We can confirm that, but.
Yeah.
The votes would need to be roll call, because it would be remote, but.
And then the twenty-first?
Twenty-first would be the third Monday.
And Mr. Studo, you can't make that?
I will not be.
Everybody else?
This is what happens at the summertime.
I'll be here from August sixteen.
Yeah, lives, too.
September fourth.
September, it's Labor Day.
So for the September meeting, again, trying to stick with that first week, I was suggesting either the five, the fifth, sixth, or seventh. I believe there's a religious holiday that we steer, steer clear of with those dates. I'll check.
I can do the bed.
That would be Tuesday.
Rosh Hashanah isn't until the fifteenth, so you're good there.
Okay. Maybe I'm thinking of the eighteenth, I know it was close.
Were you thinking of what?
The eighteenth.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the fifth, sixth, or seventh. And that actually is what has happened in recent years, because that still keeps us far enough out from the October Town Meeting to sign the warrant and get it mailed to folks.
I suggest we probably try doing on Tuesday, because I think school is either Wednesday or Thursday. Is that when they start? I forget what it is, but.
Didn't you do Tuesday the fifth?
I can't do Tuesdays.
Can't do Tuesdays. So Wednesday, the sixth?
Leanne can't do one.
I can do it, I can.
You can do the sixth?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the third, Wednesday, the third Monday would be September eighteenth, and that would also be the fall annual October Town Meeting warrant article informational hearing.
Yep.
When are warrant articles due?
August twenty-first.
From other, from other boards and committees?
From other boards and committees or petitions. But you won't, in, in this schedule, you wouldn't sign the warrant and would therefore be able to add articles at a discretion up until September sixth.
I might get a citizen's petition to automatically adjourn Select Board meetings once they hit three-hour mark.
I like it.
We're gonna have to apply law.
We can definitely get signatures for that.
We are, we have October second as the fall annual Town Meeting date. That's already been scheduled for a board hearing earlier this year. And then moving through the rest of the year, just if we followed the first and third schedule, October sixteenth would be a regular board meeting.
Town meeting on the second, correct?
Correct.
Did we wait to do November and December last year until we got closer? Wasn't that like a couple of months where we didn't? Like, we can, and I'm just, I don't know.
We probably set that schedule when we got into September. I mean, I have the dates identified, it's just the first and third for October, November, and December.
It's wide open, sixth and the twentieth on November, right? So pencil in.
October sixteenth would be a date, and then it would be November sixth and November twentieth, with tax classification occurring on November twentieth.
When do we talk about trash? I wanna make sure I marked that special.
Probably in the, in the spring is my guess, so hopefully a little ways out.
And the, and the snow, snow bylaw.
I'm not really using it anymore, so.
That's snow bylaw. So the sixth and the twentieth?
November sixth and twentieth, yes, would be the first and third.
Oh. Oh, um... All right.
And for December, it would be the 4th and 18th. And again, I think we're clear of, um...
Yeah, 4, 4 and 18.
Ah, because I'm the 7th, so we're good there.
And those would be primarily for license renewals and appointments or reappointments.
Voila.
So the, that was the easy part. We don't necessarily solve the rest of the difficult part tonight, but the chair and I were approached by some folks at the financial planning team asking if we would consider a joint meeting in the fall, probably September, to talk about what's going on in the various committees. So we think it was envisioned to be the select board, the school committee, and the planning commission. This is sort of a follow-up to a joint meeting. We had wastewater, actually, I think, in the late wintertime. So that's something to be thinking about, and I think what, what Kate was brought up is, you know, do we want to consider timing, strategic planning, you know, before that?
Right.
Do we want to wait till after that? That's another thing we can be thinking about, but don't need to necessarily decide right now. And then the wastewater project and whether or not we decide to proceed with that on the warrant for the October town meeting or call a special town meeting, and then the timing of a debt exclusion election 35 days after we notify the town clerk. So things that we just need to be thinking about and need to decide tonight, but there, I kind of have them on my list of, hey, things that, these are, it's all gonna come together in the middle later part of the summer. So just put those out there for folks to think about, more than anything.
All right.
On the schedule?
Minutes? Do we have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, move to approve the regular session minutes as written for the following dates, May 3rd, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Wallner, and a second by Mrs. Manny Kelly. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studel?
Aye.
Mrs. Manny Kelly?
Aye.
And myself is aye.
Madam Chair, move to approve the regular session minutes as written for the following date, May 8th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wallner, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, through you, those are as amended, is that correct? Yeah, amended, meaning we had a recorded vote from Mrs. Manny Kelly on one of the articles. They corrected, they could correct that, so...
As amended, as amended. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studel?
Aye.
Mrs. Manny Kelly?
Aye.
And myself is 7th.
I don't know if the chair or the clerk wants to read the actions on minutes that have been...
Sounds like I'll read it.
Last meeting, yeah.
Do I have something?
It's on the agenda.
I'm sorry. Oh, oh, I see, I see, okay. So acknowledgement of review and continued non-disclosure of portions of the following select board executive session minutes, 1A to 18, Section 3 Fire Union, 122, 2018, Section 3 NUE Agreement, 122 to 18...
Yes.
2018, Section 3 Opioid Litigation, 122, 2018, Section 2 Non-Union, 212, 2018, Section 2 Non-Union, 212, 2018, Section 3 NUE Agreement, 212, 218, 2018, Section 3 Health Insurance, 226, 2018, Section 3 Opioid Litigation, 226, 2018, Section 2 Non-Union, 226, 2018, Section 3 Health Insurance, 319, 2018, Section 7 Privacy, 319, 2018, Section 3 Health Insurance. Acknowledgement of release of portions of the following select board executive session minutes subject to any necessary redactions under the public records law. 1A, 2018, Section 3 SSBC Litigation, 122, 2018, Section 3 SSBC Litigation, 226, 2018, Section 3 SSBC Litigation, and 319, 2018, Section 3 SSB Litigation.
Is that a vote? That's it, okay. All right, so we can go to the town administration's report?
Can I just point something out under number 8? Do we want to review the warrant article assignments?
Oh, do we miss that?
Since we, our next meeting is town meeting.
Oh.
Yes.
All right, how many did we have?
We have 35, so divided by 4.
Well, 34 is really the right number, because 35, we're not, we're not doing anything, right?
Still give the recommendation, that's all. Or not.
So it's 34 almost. We don't know that.
There's 35 where we, we weigh in on all 35, it's just...
Give our recommendation, you're...
Give our recommendations, and then you might make a presentation of some of them, but not that one necessarily.
So that's 7 each?
No. 7 times 4 is 28.
7 times 5, there's 5.
Wait, there's 5 of us. Did you forget to count yourself?
So that's 7 each?
I forgot to count myself.
Is there anybody that wants a specific one?
I don't care.
Doesn't matter? Someone who goes to...
I'll do the first ones.
I have to look at them.
I don't care.
You want the first one? All right, Mr. Studel will take 1 through 7.
Wait a minute, because I, I don't know if I'm...
Was there a certain one you wanted?
No.
Oh, yeah, I haven't had to do the transportation one, because I can...
I'll take the next 7 if you want.
Okay.
Does that include the transportation? No, I don't think I can do that.
Transportation's the last.
It is, so you'll take the last.
I can do last.
Why can't you?
Because I can't do article, I don't think I'm allowed to do Article 12.
Why can't you do 12? What does Kaylee do now for work?
Oh, yeah, she's got all that to worry about.
Maybe we should swap, uh, we should swap.
You want to take the first 7?
And I'll do 8 to 14, the last article. I don't care, I'll just jump down.
You do 8 to 14.
I'm 1 through 7.
The citizen wants the early articles.
Okay.
I'll swap you out on that one. We can make a change. 8 to 14.
8 to 14.
I have no confidence.
1 to 7 was Miss Manny Kelly, 30.
So 6, 15 to 21?
Who's that? Me or you?
15 to 22.
2.
To 22?
Want to do those?
Uh, Mr. O'Leary, do you want those, or do you want the next 7?
I don't even know which one's a which.
15 is prior year bills through the routine articles.
Oh, you have a fun stuff.
Through funding retirement.
This is right up your alley.
So that puts you 23 to...
Operating patches.
What's that?
Operating patches.
Sure.
So that's 15 to 21.
I'll take 23 to 28, 9.
15 to 21, manager.
What's that?
15 to 21, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20.
Oh, you're right, 21, right.
15 to 21.
It is 21, I was right.
Everyone's lost the ability to do math, like, so...
And then the next is 22 to 28, which does not include the senior disabled transportation arch.
22 to 28.
So I'll take the last, the last.
No, I'll take those.
And I'll do the last one.
Do the last.
So that's 29 to 35. All right. That brings us to some of the administration's reports.
Just briefly, Madam Chair, through you to the board and to the community as well. We are in the process of issuing the quarterly water and trash bills. I would just call to the attention of our ratepayers that the bill for trash recycling, which would normally be an amount of $75, will be an amount of $65 for this current quarter. It's a one-time reduction in the cost associated with the credit that we're receiving back from public services for costs that were incurred to see the trash was collected over a three-year period, as well as a reduction in overall costs of $25,000 appropriated for this fiscal year. We're gonna monitor the performance of this program moving forward, but for the next quarter, it will be back to the customary $75, and we'll continue at that level in all likelihood through the course of the fiscal year. If there are changes either to the structure or the amount, as I mentioned earlier, there'll probably be reviewed as part of the budget process in the late winter and early spring. But just letting folks know that when you see the bill, when you see that it's for $65, not $75, it's not an error, it's correct, but it is a one-time reduction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, hopefully that will make people happy.
Probably not.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, board member reports and all the new business. Mr. O'Leary?
See everybody at town meeting, June 12th. Thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, so it's gonna be a busy social weekend in North Reading, and in Reading, because we're doing the, there's the block party on June 23rd. So, and then the, the North Reading and Reading are doing a joint Juneteenth festival, which is gonna be at the Reading Town Common on Saturday, the 24th, from 1:00 to 7:00. And they're gonna, it's a really, it's actually a really exciting itinerary compared, last year we did our first Juneteenth thing at Ipsar River Park, it was, you know, humble, there wasn't a lot of people there. Reading actually hired a DEI manager who's very progressive, tries to meet people where they're coming from, and so they've organized this, and like our human rights group is collaborating with them, so there's good collaboration going on. So please, everybody, make note of that. And then on the 25th is the Third Annual Pride Parade in town here. That'll be, I think it starts around 12, and they, they're planning big events and everything else like that. So I participated over the last two years, and over the last two years, we've always done proclamation, so I think I had done the first one. You did it last year. So I'd like us to bring that forward. If I, yours was fine last year, if you could bring that forward, so we could read it again, just start off the mic, that'd be good. Be good to have that proclamation going forward. And there'll be more details about that coming up.
So you'll need that proclaimed by the board either on the 12th or the 21st?
Let's do it earlier in the month as opposed to later, yeah.
We'll put it on the proclamation.
What's that?
Pride month.
It would be the eve, we need to be the evening, the town meeting.
Okay.
We'll note that for...
Yep, so let's do that. I, we've never done a Juneteenth one, I don't know. Gotta think about that. I mean, it is a holiday, but we haven't. Let's just stick with the pride for this one. And then the recycling committee, you know, this solid waste recycling committee, they are, they're thinking about expanding their responsibilities. This is just in concept form right now. Other towns are integrating their, their, we talked about an energy conservation committee before, and they're talking about making it into a sustainability, which would take on recycling, trash, and start to look at energy conversation, conservation in town. So I give them a lot of credit for bringing that forward. The same person that approached us, Leanne Husha, was also there, so there's money to be found by doing this, and if they have the bandwidth, try to integrate it into one thing. So elevate that group up from just recycling and trash into conservation, sustainability, which is popular with other towns across the, across the area. So it's exciting. I hope they follow through on that. It's good energy. And I think that's it. Thank you.
I had the, I won the award for the most pride spirit, so I throw the challenge down, show up and support. That was fun.
It's a lot of fun.
I still saved my, I saved it, so...
Good, yeah. No, I mean, your, your proclamation last year was great, so we should just recycle that, which was great. And the people that do this are supporting it as well, so I mean, they, they appreciated what we had to say. So it's a good event, it's a lot of fun. It's gonna be big this year, even bigger than it was last two years, so, and I will be in there.
Again.
I'll be on the sidelines cheering.
Perfect.
You got nothing?
I have none.
Just one quick thing, because I raised it the last meeting and you weren't here. I, I think it would be good, because we've got that little breathing room from the Mass DOT, you know, extending its deadlines, for us to consider appointing to that sewer committee, so that sewer committee can take it to the streets and just start meeting with business owners and residents to explain the need for this project and, you know, do some of the informational meetings that we've been conducting, or that the TA and the working group has been conducting with people to be able to share the data and information. So I raised it, you weren't here, but I think it's be a good idea for us to...
Yeah, I'd say that.
Yeah, get some business owners on the route, and we have probably four or five months now to kind of, like I said, let this working group take it to the streets and talk to people about it, send the benefit to the community. So maybe add that to your liaison list if you...
Speaking of that, if anybody wants to let me know what liaison positions they want to keep, text it to me, or if you want to keep what you have, or if you want any changes, all right, because I'll have to do that.
So what happens? You, you drop off of them, and those are the open ones? Is that basically how it works?
It's up to the chair.
I, I don't know.
You drop a few, because you pick up.
Right, because I'm picking up.
You pick up quite a few.
So they, yeah, so there will be others that will open up?
I definitely want Hillview.
So do I.
Just kidding.
I'll stick to what I have. Which is, do CPC, like 100 of them?
I am.
You probably want to do CPC. It's my suggestion.
Well, I also need, you need to give me some.
Yeah, I need to give her some.
I'm losing quite a few.
Whatever you're keeping, so you gotta decide that.
Yeah. So I'll go over it. So if there's anything you're passionate about that you really want to keep, just let me know. All right. And then Memorial Day Parade?
Yeah, that's right.
Monday at 9 o'clock. And then am I gonna do that? Am I gonna march?
Yes, yes.
Am I gonna march?
I hope, I hope to, just, we have this whole weekend where one of my sons is getting married, and it's a three-day event, so...
Wow.
It's through Sunday, so hopefully...
Okay, well, that's a good excuse if you don't, if you don't make congratulations.
It's a good excuse, and, you know, there were a couple of years where he actually marched with me, so... Vincenzo, feel free to bring your kids.
There's no sickness, there's somebody throwing up.
Well, again, big for the wagon, though. You might need a little muddy car. Might need a golf cart.
I need to ask permission to actually temporarily march with Little League.
Well, it all depends on where, located. I mean, they, they kind of overran us anyway.
Yeah, they were with us, yeah.
Maybe if you act as a, someone to corral them, maybe that would be helpful.
Are you marching with Little League?
There's also cemetery celebrate, not celebrations, memorials.
Yep, the cemetery memorials that the militia does, yeah.
And the scouts help out with that.
It's, it's a fun day, and, you know, just everybody come out and enjoy it and show some pride, and have fun.
Madam Chair, through you, I believe the intention is to host a ceremony at the top of the common rather than in the gazebo. Hopefully that'll make it easier for folks as they're finishing the parade to, to stay with us, enjoy it in there. So I, God, I read that in the, in the notification.
Isn't that what we usually do?
We normally go down the hill to the gazebo for Memorial Day, but for veterans, they were up top.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think that's Miss Magnus' intention.
To bring it up top.
For us to remain up, I think that's what I understood.
And it should start right when the parade ends as opposed to a half an hour later, because last time I did it was like a half an hour, everybody's disappeared.
Everybody leaves.
Why would you hang around? There's nothing going on. It should be bang, bang, bang. And I had mentioned that to Richard Stratton last time.
Great.
So that, that may, that may have been a consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then just a couple of quick things. Community Impact Team is having a RAD program, Ray Aggression Defense Course for Women in June, the 5th, the 7th, the 13th, and the 14th, from 6 to 9 p.m. You must attend all four dates. And National Night Out will be on Tuesday, August 1st. I think that's confirmed. Is that confirmed?
It's usually the first Tuesday of August, I think.
Tuesday, August 1st, yeah. From 5:30 to 7:30. That's a great night where the police and the community come together, and it's a great event, so I believe that's on the calendar, too. So that is all. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, move to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody's second.
I have a motion.
Get it, get on our word. Get it tomorrow, wait till our word, wait till tomorrow.
To adjourn by Mr. Wallner, and I have a second by, we'll give it to Mr. Studel, he can get one. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studel?
Aye.
Mrs. Manny Kelly?
Aye.
And myself is aye.